All right, good evening, everyone. Good to see you here tonight. It is 5:04, and I will call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can't...
What?
Where is it? All right, Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to our ceremonial items tonight. Item 3.1 on the agenda, this is a proclamation honoring the history and contributions of the Placerville Shakespeare Club on their 125th anniversary. And it's my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas in 1897, 20 ladies formed a club to study the works of William Shakespeare, naming their club the Placerville Shakespeare Club. And whereas in 1906, the members of the club aided in the establishment of El Dorado Public Library. And whereas in 1913, the club formed a civic group to clean up and beautify the city of Placerville, they also started PTA in the county and free kindergarten and promoted school bond issues. The same year, they helped save cedar grove trees along Highway 50. And whereas in 1921, the Placerville Shakespeare Club incorporated with the state of California. And in 1929, the Placerville Shakespeare Club built their clubhouse. And whereas in 1940s, the club conducted blood drives for World War II. And whereas in 1951, the clubhouse was relocated to the present site on Bedford Avenue to make way for Highway 50. And since 1950 to the present day, the clubhouse remains a social club and event venue for the community. And whereas in 1983, the city council of Placerville declared the Shakespeare Clubhouse a historic building. And for over 36 years, club members have supported the Penny Pines reforestation program with monthly contributions. And whereas for over 35 years, the club has been awarding scholarships to women high school graduates funded by members and memorial donations. And now, therefore be it proclaimed, I, Cara Taylor, by virtue of the authority invested in me as mayor of the city of Placerville, state of California, do hereby honor and recognize the Placerville Shakespeare Club for their years of service to the community. And I would like to invite Ellen Osborne up to the podium, president of the Shakespeare Club and member for 22 years.
I think I can speak for the membership of the club in saying that we feel very honored and pleased that you have presented us with this proclamation. We're going to present it to the membership this coming Tuesday at our Silver Tea where it will be read and put on display. I'm very grateful to you all, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. And if you want to hang on one second, and I'll bring this down and present you with the proclamation.
I'll just, you know...
Ellen?
Ellen?
Ellen? Just one second.
We're not done talking about this.
We're not done with you. We just wanted to share with you, I want to share with you, I had my, well, I hate to be so personal here, I had one of my wedding receptions there. My first one. And, you know, and it's been, it's awkward now, but it's been, it's been a great, what you guys have done maintaining that and making it available for our community to gather is really an exceptional thing in this town. We don't have many places to gather in this town. And it was such a, it's such a big room with a kitchen. I've been to many, many events there over the years. And I can't express more appreciation for what you do to maintain that, make it available. It's not very expensive. You don't, you don't get carried away with the pricing, and it's a reasonable thing. And it's a beautiful building. You guys have taken really good care of it. So, I just, my appreciation for our community, for having that asset and that resource in our community. And the historical nature and what you guys have done in this town is just, it's a great thing. So, just want to express some appreciation for that.
Thank you.
You bet.
We enjoy using it for our citizens, but we also really enjoy sharing it with the community. I've got to say, in my past life, I was a caterer, and I catered many events at the Shakespeare Club, from weddings and baby showers and memorial services. And I want to echo the sentiment that it is a really special venue for the community where we don't have, you know, a lot of different options for a place for people to gather. And until I read this proclamation, I did not realize the just broad range of services that the Shakespeare Club and the women that founded it have provided to this community going back to 1897. I was really blown away by the service and commitment to this community from the Shakespeare Club.
So, I'd like to say that I am a member of the Shakespeare Club. I'm very proud of it. I joined in 2012. And I think what a lot of people don't realize is that, because I always thought, oh, they just read Shakespeare. And they just have reading, and that's not the case at all. They have so many groups, it's unbelievable, reading groups, but gardening and, and, I don't know, I used to do tap dancing and, you know, just all kinds of things that they offer for the ladies in town. And I just, it's a great group to belong to, and I would encourage anyone who would like to become a member to let us know, and maybe we can get you in. So, but congratulations.
Thank you, Patty. And just one question.
Get on the microphone. Get by the microphone, we can't hear you.
I'd just like to emphasize our scholarship program.
Oh, yes, that...
This year, we gave out, in June, we gave out seven $1,000 scholarships to graduating women high school seniors. And we've been doing that, I've been trying to find out when we started it, and it goes back so far, I haven't been able to find out. But at least since the early 1980s, we've given out many scholarships, and we're very proud of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to give the public an opportunity to speak on this item, if anyone would like to step up to the podium. All right, seeing none, I will close public comment on item three and move on to item four, closed session report. City Attorney Ibrahimini.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. The council did meet in closed session tonight. There was no public comments prior to meeting in closed session, and the council met on real property negotiations with Arts and Culture regarding 525 Main Street, and the council provided direction to staff.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to five, adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to pull 7.6 and adopt the agenda as otherwise.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. All right, thank you. 6.1, brief comments by the city council. Let's start with Patty.
Oh, gosh. Well, I attended the Women's Fund, they had their anniversary in honoring the club for 15 years that they've been, and then that was a great success, and I, really nice evening, and then I'm going to put a plug in, we're going to hear about it later, but Saturday, I helped clean up the cemetery. We're getting ready for buried history, and so, that's what I've been doing.
Dennis?
I look forward to the buried history. I plan on attending. And I, and I know that they're here, and I think everybody should attend, because I think it's a great waiting. It's a lot about the downtown merchants this year, merchants on Main Street and merchants in town, and their history and legacy that they have left our community, and I think, I think that's an amazing contribution to be discovered. Let's see, I had the opportunity to attend a forum here for all of the people running for city council, and I think that was a great event, well done by the, and appreciate the effort put forward by the League of California Women Voters. And I want to, I don't think this is on the event, so Cal Cities has an opportunity for board members to sit on policy committees, and those are available right now. And so, I don't know what all the policy committees are, but I just, it's in the back of my mind, I wanted to put that out there, so if you'd like to consider sitting on a policy committee, most of it's by Zoom, and you just talk about policies that are coming up and how, what positions are important for small cities, because this is a, we have 57 different cities we represent from this board of Cal Cities that I sit on. And, and it carries weight with the state, and so, it's important for us to, if we want to, to participate in the decision process of how we're going to do this. So, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dennis. Jackie?
I attended a workshop called Bridging Divides with the El Dorado Community Foundation. Mayor Tara Taylor attended that also. That was kind of a workshop, talking about how resolve conflicts in our community, and that was kind of the main focus. And then I attended Walk to School Day for Sierra and Schnell School. I think I've done that for quite a few years, and that's just always a really fun event for the kids and the community. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Jackie. Michael?
Looking forward to going to the graves as well, see the graves. Come by on Saturday if anyone's around. I'm across the street from the cemetery, so if you want to come say hi, just pop by my house. I don't know if I'll make it on Friday, but I'll definitely be there on Saturday, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I was also going to mention buried history, but I think that that's been covered by everybody, but I am looking forward to that. And as Jackie mentioned, I attended the Bridging Divide Workshop. This was put on by the Community Foundation and several other sponsoring organizations, and it was, it was a really packed room of community leaders from healthcare and education and government and public safety, all there to try to find a way to kind of decrease the tension and divisiveness in the current climate. It was, it was really interesting, and it was inspiring to see just a packed room of people that came together to participate in it. I wanted to give a shout out to all of the candidates that participated in the candidate forum. Last week, I attended as an audience member, and it was fun to watch, and I remember doing that four years ago, and it was, it's just a really great way to meet the candidates, and you can, I believe, view it online if you weren't able to make it in person. So, it's a great way to inform your votes on who the best city council candidates will be. And we wrapped up Trip to Green since the last meeting, and there will be surveys going out on Monday. And we really ask for feedback from community members, anyone that experienced Trip to Green businesses. We want to get a really comprehensive view of how it affected people and what worked and what didn't. So, I hope everyone keeps an eye out for that survey, and it is really important that we get your feedback, so please fill it out. And that's, that's all my comments for today. So, we will move on to item 6.2. This is a presentation from our community utility liaison, Mark Acuna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members and department heads and chiefs, it's very nice to be here again. I was last here in May, and I will go through several items that we have been working on with PG&E and city staff throughout the summer. Perhaps the biggest one is the, the, being informed by, from PG&E that the microgrid or the generators on Broadway were defunded in January of this year, based on their reliance on more sophisticated weather forecasting programs. They are now finally confident that this region does not suffer from significant north winds, and therefore, they will not be putting a set of generators this year. That has been a huge foundational piece to keeping some parts of town with electric service during the Paus PSPS outages. Did you, I was, before we go beyond that, I think I would, because to me, this is a really significant advance or admission by PG&E, that their prior weather forecasting was massively inaccurate, and it certainly takes a big load off, I think it should help take a big load of concern off everybody's minds. Just so the public understands, in the event, per PG&E, in the event that they foresee a wind event in this area, they feel that they have enough, they will have enough lead time to bring in a set of generators and have them connected before that event happens. A little footnote is, to the whole, Cleve, Mr. Morris and I have worked on this for five or six years, probably. At no time during any of the previous outages did the winds in the Placerville area meet or exceed PG&E's criteria for the safe, the need for the fire safety shut off. So, I would like to just acknowledge, you know, Cleve's assistance on this, former fire, or interim fire chief Floyd Ogan, when I was mayor in 2019, he stood side by side with the city and anyone in the county that was interested and said, absolutely no need for this, you are creating an emergency inside of an emergency. So, I say kudos to PG&E for coming up, getting the right weather forecasting information and getting that approved so that they are comfortable, I feel basically removing us from the PSPS, future PSPS outages. Is there any questions on that one? That one was the biggie.
Mark, on that, thank you, and that's great news. So, would that cover, do you think that covers the totality of the city, or just portions when it comes to PSPSs? Because I know we're all, I mean, obviously, we're all on different grids, if you will, in terms of the city.
I'm confident that it's going to encompass the Placerville region.
Okay.
And again, we're talking about Placerville Highway 50 corridor, there will still be, there's still a potential for outages on the Highway 50 corridor above Pollock Pines, the Pollock Pines area, and of course Georgetown Divide. That's a, that's a whole different wind program over there.
And, and Mark, there's still potential for our electricity being shut off if a tree falls on a line or something like that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, it's not that we're not going to have, you know, but maybe we won't be shut down for three or four days, right?
Yeah. It's been a while now since we've had one, and it's, we're all quick to forget, the buildup to that, the power going out, the wind never arriving, then because they shut it off, they then have to inspect every single inch of the de-energized facilities, which then, this council member Riley noted, can take a day to two days and nights. All the while, nothing's really happened, but our power is out, you know, across thousands of households. So, I, this is a huge step forward, and I'm glad they, they can finally see what we were trying to gently tell them for the last five years.
Gently? You were pretty adamant, you did a really good job.
Thank you. Any other questions on that one? All right, thank you. Just to share with the, with the council, you've got my two-page summary that I think Cleve presented as part of your agenda package. Patty, and I think Vice Mayor Saragosa, you've mentioned the outages. We did have the fire, they did have their fire safe switch settings, which were that really instantaneous outages. This summer, those predominantly affected the north side of town, north of Highway 50. Luckily, most of those were resolved fairly quickly, so they did, you know, they did prevent the potential for an ignition, and thankfully, there wasn't a huge impact to the citizens. Three or four hours is way better than two or three days, so, and I'm sure that that will be an ongoing program every summer. The thing to watch for now is when they set the switches back so that they don't overreact when the wind does blow and it's pouring rain. I'll kind of keep an eye on them. The Placerville Weather Station, that was something that back when PG&E was more interested in adding to their network, given the recent decision that we were a very low-risk zone. As you can imagine, that, that, that part of the, of their work has been removed, so there won't be doing any new cameras or any new weather stations. I kind of note that without the PSPS outages, you know, we don't need as many standby generators perhaps as we did. So, that's, that's a plus. The underground feeder for the south side of Main Street, I might ask the city engineer if she has heard from them recently? No. We did a walk of Reservoir Street back in May with a couple of the PG&E designers, Brandon Sanders was with us, and PG&E construction crew foreman. What we found out that, and as you'll notice, this is, this is not going to be a complete undergrounding of that street. They are still, even with the reduced wind exposure, they are still proposing to go ahead with it. They could have picked a more difficult spot, but I don't know how they would have ever found one. With conflicts and challenges, you can't even stick a shovel in the ground. So, we haven't heard back from them, and they were supposed to have started to do potholing, where they, we're going to try and locate the, more exactly, the rock and some other existing utilities that are along, underground utilities along Reservoir Street. I find it interesting that that has not moved forward in, throughout the summer, so I'll check on that. But when they get done, they will, they intend to remove all of their overhead primary facilities, meaning the ultra-high voltage, if you will. There's some design question in my mind, because low-voltage wires have been known to start significant fires. So, it was obvious, I think the engineering aides would agree, that the day we walked it, there was a lot of, oh, wow, that's a lot of rock, that's a steep bank, this is a very narrow road, et cetera. So, I'll check on that one for you, but the intention is there, and it will be, it will solve the problem if we had an outage of the south side of Main Street being out of power while the north side of Main Street remained in power. So, more to come on that one. Transmission switches, this was another important one. I am assured that that program is moving forward, and that's a good one. Again, it'll reduce the need for prolonged outages if we do have a windstorm, because they'll be able to leave the 115,000-volt lines energized in a safe manner so that they don't have to start, you know, all the way back in Diamond Springs to restore the service to town. So, hopefully, they'll get that installed. The Placerville Substation Building, this is a real positive. After several years, Brandon Sanders and the PG&E paint department are to be commended. We worked with them, oh, we've been working with them for a while, but this spring, we were extremely successful, and they have gone in and recognized that that building was theirs. It's probably been 40-plus years since it had been painted, and selected some very nice earth tone colors and have been doing a much better job in being a good, great neighbor on Broadway. So, thanks to, thanks to Brandon, he really had to dig deep in the PG&E corporation to figure out how to get that accomplished. So, thanks to them and the pinker, they did a great job. Distribution hardening projects, this is a leftover from when we were a PSPS district, and since we don't have those concerns, I'm not quite sure how these things are going to work out in the future, but it's great that Dasketon Village is now completely served from the underground system, from Broadway, though those residents don't have to worry. They have a much safer system, a much more reliable system, and that's an important facility with a lot of important neighbors up there. They've also, with or without encroachment permits, this summer got the switching work installed on Placerville Drive, that is, for our business districts, who've been talking to them for a couple of years about this, so this would be Fornie Road, Low Highway, all the Placerville Drive fairground area, that is all now removed from the outage risk areas and will not be impacted near as what it would have been before we started on this. Next item is the double pole issue. That is certainly a living challenge. You know, a lot, not a lot has changed. I think city staff now has a much better understanding of all the requirements between the various owners of the joint poles that are along our streets and how the different utilities interact with each other, the legal restraints and obligations that are there. My hat's off to the city engineering staff and, and parish planning staff for their work with trying to get PG&E to understand that this impact is growing every week. The example that I would ask the council and the public to go out and take a look at, that I just double-checked on this weekend, is 555 Placerville Drive, across the street from Clifton and Warren's, I think it's, it was Tom's Burgers. The, I'm confident that your city engineer and her staff spent at least two months communicating with PG&E because of the pole being hit by a car over a weekend. Yes, there was a police report, yes, there's a responsible party, and the repair of that pole. I would invite you to go out and take a look at what PG&E and the other utilities now consider work completed. It looks like a yardarm hanging upside down off of a broken ship. I wouldn't want it in front of my business. I wouldn't want it along my business boulevard, but this is an example of, oh, that's all we can do. It's embarrassing, as a former engineer, absolutely unacceptable. So, please, go by and take a look at that one.
Mark, could I, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just going to say, so, what do, what do you suggest we do? Write letters after we go look at it? And, I mean, is, is there much merit in, in the folks? I also have a pole situation that was promised me, and it's still in my backyard, so, and looks terrible. Anyway, what do we do?
Can I just mention quickly, Mark? You, you were left out of this, but I know Brandon Sanders contacted Rebecca and has a meeting set up to discuss this topic with PG&E officials. I don't know if the date's been set yet, but 26th, is that what you said?
Yes, October 26th.
Thank you. So, I just want to make you aware of that, Mark, that, that he didn't contact you and directly to Rebecca on that, and we'll, we'll probably include you in on that if you're available.
I would appreciate it, yeah.
So, there are some things happening there, we've been working on it, we think, hope that there is a solution, we're going to continue to work on that, so. No, this is the whole double pole. There's, I think Rebecca told me 5, 700, something like that, or I forget what the number was.
It's a couple hundred now.
Couple hundred, okay. So, there, anyway, there's a lot of them, and, and we want to work on getting that resolved, so.
That's a lot for five or six square miles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, they didn't do maintenance for 25 or 30 years, and I'm sure they're not, you know, on anybody's Christmas card list now from the phone company or Comcast or any of those, because they are all drawn into this same big quagmire, if you will. But, yeah, for the effort that I know Rebecca put in at 555, and for what we're left with, that is just, it's great in the fact that it's so bad. And then you can ask them to stand there and say, yeah, this is a, this is acceptable engineering and public safety has been met. No way. So, I would be happy to be a part of that, Cleve. I would let you know that I can say this, you can't. The city engineer has been very successful with getting PG&E's attention by stopping issuing encroachment permits. That is massively effective. And while it seems, maybe it seems a little harsh, you know, this is our community, we are the folks that understand that our little streets and our business districts and residential districts function a certain way. Contractor comes here from Idaho and looks at it and goes, well, I can close this street all day, nobody's going to mind, and he's looking at Pacific Street. It's no big deal to him, because he's, you know, you have to remember, there's no local buy-in anymore. All of these construction crews are from out of the area. They have no clue what a Placerville Drive is compared to a, you know, Cedar Ravine. Just, just give me a sketch and off we go. So, my, again, congratulations to Rebecca for her hard work this past year, very time-consuming, and I feel to a great deal, very much unnecessary. So, but certainly appreciate your support on this. But certainly appreciate your support on this. And then lastly, the scenic highway and the encroachment permitting, as I've noted here. One of the things that I realized this past summer is that, well, for example, the scenic highway ordinance, which is very much in force and very important, what was happening is it wasn't, the inquiries weren't happening at the engineering level, design level, so that someone could start to take the scenic highway corridor rules into consideration. What was happening is those jobs were arriving in city engineering's box wanting encroachment permits, six months after the design work had been done, and everything is locked in place. So I don't know how successful we've been, but I've been hoping that we can push back to the engineering design level of the projects and say, "Hey, you guys are, you know, this is an important situation that exists along the highway, and there are clear guidelines, and we all need to follow them." With that, I would be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Well, thank you, Mark, for this report and for your consistent and continued advocacy for the city. You know, when PG&E started doing the power shut-offs several years ago, I think that really got everybody's attention, but I think that a lot of people don't realize all the other issues that we deal with in terms of the double poles and fixing up the Placerville Substation, which looks so much better. And I know that a lot of it's been your hard work behind the scenes advocating for us. So thank you. And also, thank you to Rebecca for, you know, holding their toes to the fire when it comes to getting proper permits and all that. Are there any questions or comments for?
No, I just want to echo the appreciation I have for Mark. I mean, this has been almost two straight years of advocating and conversations and bringing your expertise to the table to help us get where we are, and I really appreciate all your efforts on behalf of the city. Thanks.
Ditto, Mark. I mean, if every city had a Mark Acuna, PG&E would be in some serious trouble.
Ooh, easy.
But no, I mean, for our little city, we're punching well above our weight with a giant corporation that could easily just ignore, you know, a lot of the sentiments that we're putting forward. So kudos to you again for that work and for the continued work, because this is a huge development for us and for our city to, for our businesses. I mean, everyone that knows, you know, and even for the two- and three-hour ones, you know, people don't know how long their power's going to be out, you know, whether they send employees home, whether you stick around. So having this not be able to happen for one, two days, three days is a huge development. So this is great, great news.
The impact on staffing, on taxes, tax revenue? You know, on, you know, how many people are not going to have to go buy a generator now? That's, everything. There's so much to that. And you have put in the yeoman's work by far, and your knowledge and experience has been just really great. We're not done yet, so it sounds like you're quitting, and it sounds like it's over, but I have a feeling this is going to go on for a while, so I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want you going anywhere. Really appreciate what you do.
Thank you. And curiosity is my worst bad habit, I guess, because I'm really curious as to what they come up with on Reservoir Street. And I'm really just shocked and dismayed as an engineer that some of this double pole stuff is going on. And when I saw 555, I said, "Oh, no. I need to go call Rebecca. We need to talk. This is not right." And again, it's all part of the impact of this community, and they have an obligation as a franchise-operating utility to be a community, a good community member. So thank you for your support. It means a lot when I'm in these meetings with the big corporation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will open this item up to the public in case there's anyone that wants to comment
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident who has been subjected to PG&E's outages, and I am extremely glad that we have Mark on our side, because I think you've done a great job. Hang in there, don't leave us. PG&E is not shaping up to be a whole lot better neighbor in the future than they have been in the past, but thanks to you, they're better than they used to be. And thanks to Rebecca, too. So hang in there and keep holding their feet to the fire, and know that you have the community support, too.
Thank you, Sue. All right, I will close public comment, and we will move on to item 6.3. And Mr. Zeller has this verbal presentation regarding the Key Club Community Garden.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you recall, the city council approved a service project for the Key Club at Eldorado High School. And for a little bit of background, the Key Club is an international organization for high school students. It's a student-led organization and has the goal of encouraging leadership through serving others. The Key Club's core values are caring, character-building, inclusiveness, and leadership. And the Eldorado High School Key Club is sponsored by the Placerville Kiwanis Club. In keeping with the goal of leadership through service, the Eldorado Key Club will be building a community park, or a community garden in Duffy Park. The community garden will target individuals and families living in the nearby Cottonwood Senior Apartments and the Cottonwood Park Apartments, and will provide an opportunity for families to grow their own food. We've been working with the Key Club on some plans, and we also have two representatives of the Kiwanis Club of Placerville here tonight, Sophie Cabrera and Tom Hinshaw, who are advisors for the Key Club. And we also have the president of the Key Club, Jace Kaldensky, who is here to provide an update on the club's efforts to date. Jace.
Hi, my name is Jace Kaldensky. Thank you so much for approving this project a while ago, and now I'm back to give a little update. It's like Mr. Zeller said, I am the co-president of the Eldorado High School Key Club, and I also oversee 11 schools in our region as the district spirit coordinator. So I'm pretty well-involved with the organization. So our club has raised just over $5,000 for this project. It'll be about $10,000 to $12,000 for the overall project. That's the quote we got two years ago, and then building materials prices just went woo through the roof. And so it was a little, on a little bit of a hold there while wood prices went up and down and went all crazy. So now we're hoping to start building it in stages, starting with a fence around the perimeter of the garden, and then we will start building garden bed boxes, which will be built by the Eldorado High School's wood shop program with Mr. Gunnerson. And then we were getting lumber donated by the Placerville Druids. And I think that's, yeah, we had a fundraiser. It was our end-of-summer bash. We had barbecue, a piping contest, raffles, barbecue. It was fun. It was a blast. We, yeah, we raised just about $1,000 at that event.
All right. Great. Jace, thank you for coming tonight and giving us an update on this project that we had discussed, what was it, a couple, two years ago?
Two years ago, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad to see it moving forward, and that you're bringing community partners to the table and getting donations and donating materials is a great project. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for Jace or Terry?
I'm just kind of wondering when it'll be available to the community. When do you foresee that date?
My goal is before I graduate in May. No. So, yeah, I'm a senior this year, and I really want to see this project all meet and buttoned up before I go off to Sanders Junior College in next fall. So we are hoping to start building. I'm currently working on some grants through Key Club, and then I'll be applying for some grants through the Women's Fund as well, and hopefully, we will get this going, and hopefully, we'll have a fence. I have a contractor. I finally found a fencing guy. I was excited about that. He's actually currently building the set for Eldorado High School's fall show. So I looped him in to build us some fencing. So hopefully, by the spring, we'll be able to start planting.
Thank you.
So could I ask you a real quick question? The garden, who's going to do the gardening and is it, and the results of your bountiful whatever? Who's going to receive that?
Yeah, so the tenants of the Cottonwood Park Apartments and the Cottonwood Senior Apartments will be the ones who are physically gardening in the garden. It will be free to them. They'll have to sign a little contract, like they'll upkeep it, because there is a limited amount of space. There's going to be 16 garden beds in the space, and so if someone's just signing up for it and then leaving it there when someone else could be utilizing that, that's not fun. So we will be keeping up with that and making sure that the families or seniors will be working in their beds. And then the Key Club will also be maintaining a garden bed outside of the garden. I've looked at a few different community garden plans for other community gardens. This is actually the first in our area, which is exciting. And so a lot of them will have, like, they call it a vandals garden outside. So if you're going to steal, like, tomatoes from the garden, please take from this and not from the families growing healthful nutritious food. So Eldorado High School Key Club will be maintaining that, and then the benefits from that garden and the produce will then be donated to a local food bank or food pantry.
And I'm thinking, and I'm hoping that you're putting a great big tall fence around all this?
Yes. So that's the big thing, is putting a fence around.
Because the deer are going to come and see you.
Exactly, yes. I live out in Somerset, and we, that is our big problem, is the deer. So we will be building a very large deer fence around the perimeter to keep deer, and anyone else who tries to get in, out.
There you go. Thank you, that sounds great.
And thank you, thank you, first of all, Jace, your effort in putting this on for the community, it's been, it's a process. And I think you're discovering all sorts of processes within this, and, you know, and you're also discovering what it takes to put on a project and get people involved and get the city involved, and there's, I wish I would have learned as much as you did at your age, because I'm learning some of those lessons now on city council, and it's, and they're good lessons, too, let me tell you. I also want to thank the advisors, one for being here tonight and for all the work you guys do. I went through Key Club, and it was a foundational part of my being involved in the community. And I remember Bart Tamblyn, who was my advisor way back when, and he impacted my life in a meaningful way. And so I want to express my appreciation for what you two are doing in terms of giving back to the community in your way. So thank you, and thank all of you for what you're doing.
We would definitely not have this amazing opportunity if we did not have two amazing advisors to help us along the way. Thank you.
All right. If anyone would like to comment from the public on this item, item 6.3, please step up to the podium. All right, seeing none, I will close public comment on this. And once again, I want to thank Jace and everyone for being here and for the update, and it's just great to see this moving forward. Take care. Next item is 6.4, and this is a presentation by the Placerville Fire Safe Council on the use of city grant funds. And Mr. Morris, do you want to introduce this, or does?
Yeah, just Sue Rodman will do the presentation. I don't need you, Morris.
All right.
Thanks.
Mayor and Council, I want to apologize for the screen quality. We're having some technical difficulties. Hopefully, we'll have it fixed at the next meeting.
It didn't used to look yellow, but it does now, so, anyway.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sue Rodman, and I'm here to represent the Fire Safe Council and their Defensible Space Committee. And, okay, next. The city financing that you gave us allowed the Placerville Fire Safe Council to establish a defensible space committee and program to award grants to homeowners to help complete defensible space on their property. It's not a granted, I mean, it is a first-come, first-served program, and homeowners contribute to the project, or they're appreciated, but they're not required to contribute for approval. Some of the participants have matched the $500 grant, but many have exceeded it, and some of them by double to quadruple the original grant. There are some steps for people to participate. First, you have to contact the Fire Safe Council, let them know you're interested, and then submit an application. We have an application that can be submitted online, or it can be done for the homeowner. A trained evaluator then meets with the homeowner to evaluate the property so that they know what is, what needs to be done on their particular property, and they use the CPR 4291 standards. So those are, I believe those are statewide, and you can see an example of the marvelous residential clearance evaluation form, and it's quite complicated. So it's nice to have an evaluator who goes over the valuation with you and makes notations so that the property owner knows how this evaluation actually applies to their particular site and what needs to be done to meet those defensible space guidelines. Then the property owner obtains one or more bids from a licensed contractor and forwards the results to the evaluator. And to date, the bids have ranged from $500 to $2,500. The defensible space committee then reviews the application package and votes on approval and funding. The evaluator sends a notice of the grant approval to discuss how to go about it and/or why their application was denied. And this is an example of the letter that gets sent to them, and it tells them, "Okay, congratulations, you've been approved." And then it gives them their next steps, what they need to do, and a timeframe. It started out at 30 days, and we decided that really wasn't sufficient time for people to get this done. So then we went to 60 days, and then somebody said they thought that was too long. So now it's actually at 45 days. And then to let them know that they can also ask for an extension if it proves that their contractors are too backed up to be able to do it. Once the work is completed, then they contact their evaluator, and the evaluator goes and reviews that the work was completed as per the evaluation. If the work meets the criteria, then the Fire Safe Council treasurer cuts a check for the agreed amount. To date, we've had 10 applications and evaluations that are complete. Five project bids have been submitted and approved, and three projects are complete. About $44,000 has been approved. It hasn't all been spent, because there's still two more projects that have not completed and been funded yet. And the projects are on a variety of property types. Size ranges from city lots to small acreages, and slope types, just like the rest of Placerville, vary from almost flat to very steep. The vegetation types include very large trees, small trees, overhanging branches, shrubs, brush, and grass and weeds. The people, the people who have participated in this, by the Fire Safe Council Defensible Space Program, are pleased, both for their actual funding and for the evaluation to help them know what they need to do to provide defensible space on their home and property. It's not enough to just look at the pictures that get provided to say, "This is what your defensible space should be," and it's something else to have somebody who knows what they're doing to come and actually evaluate your property and let you know what's, what needs to be done. And it also gives them some documentation to take back to their insurance company that says, "This is what we're doing for our defensible space, so you really shouldn't be canceling our insurance." And the other thing that the evaluator works with property owners to prioritize their vegetation work. Some of these places have a massive amount of work that needs to be done, and it's more than can be done in one year. So the work needs to be split over one more year, and so the evaluator helps them to prioritize the highest priority for the current year. And hopefully, they can apply again next year to get additional funding to do more work on their defensible space. And everyone understands that both the city funds and property owner funds are limited. None of us are billionaires, and so the multi-year work responds to those limitations. Any questions?
Questions for Sue? Well, thank you, Sue, for this presentation. I do have a couple of questions.
I'll give you a couple more things, and I'll need the lights down so you can see these. These are some before and after shots. It's kind of difficult to see against the yellow background, but you can see, and this is the before shot, how much of a fuel ladder you've got, where they'd be taking no trouble for a fire to start at the bottom and go all the way to the top of these trees. And then this is where they have cleared, done a lot of clearing to get this, especially right around this intersection, so fire trucks can get through. This is a property where you can see that there's a lot of overhanging branches, and everything right up against the house. And then, when the work was done, you can, now they can walk on their sidewalk. You can actually see there's a sidewalk there. Okay? And this is the front of the house, where, is there a house back there? I think so. Now you can see that there is a house back there, and they have some chance to survive the fire. So, that is the end of the program. So, any questions?
Thank you, Sue. Couple quick questions. What's the best contact email or phone number for the Fire Safe Council, if people are interested in getting in touch?
Either one, I would think, but probably email is the easiest.
Okay, and what's the email address?
That's a good question. I don't know. I should've put that in here, but I didn't.
Okay. And then, are evaluations available for people even if they're not applying for the grant, but they just want to have somebody come out and kind of give a professional opinion?
Yes.
Okay. And are those, um, free, or is there a cost for it?
There's no, there's no charge for that. The Fire Safe Council is a, uh, not an official nonprofit, I guess, but yes, we are an official nonprofit, because Eldorado County's Fire Safe Council is an official nonprofit, and we are under their umbrella, so.
Okay.
Uh, no, we don't charge anybody to come and tell them, okay, here's your problem.
Well, that right there is a really great service to provide to the community, because I think there's a lot of people that, you know, know they need to do something with their property, but don't even know where to get started, or what the main priorities would be, so.
And I just want to be sure, and people are not, just because they ask this evaluator to come out, doesn't mean that they're going to be obligated, or reported, or anything like that. Because that, you know, people have asked that in the past, so, it's all.
No, it's a service.
Chris Keim is the one who does it. She does a really good job. She went and took a course on how to do all this evaluation. She's done a great job.
Yeah, if you're gonna do evaluations, you need to take the training first, so that you know, uh, what you're looking at, and whether you have any, uh, you know, if there's any problems, or you get trained to see, okay, what vegetation types are you dealing with, and what's their fire resistance, shall we say, or fire proneness. But, a lot of people have been, I think, more grateful, really, for the evaluation than they were for the money, especially the ones who said, okay, we'll take your $500, but it's gonna cost us $2,500, and it's not a problem, we can do it. So.
And my neighbor had the evaluation done, and just sort of for the public. I mean, it wasn't, um, it, it was very, it wasn't burdensome. I mean, it was, they took into consideration the topography and everything else, so, I mean, they weren't moonscaping, you know, his, his property. It was just very common sense things that could be done to, to, you know, diminish the chance of fire, so. So I want everyone to be, that you're not gonna have to clear cut your area, I mean, they know.
You know, if you look at this, this house here, you can see, it was just smothered, basically, and now, uh, do they still have landscaping? Yes, they do. Do they still have trees? Yes, they do. But they're a lot more fire resistant now than they were before. Before, the fire truck would've taken one look and kept, kept on going.
Mayor, just, just quickly, we looked up the, online, it says the email address is Does that sound right, Sue?
Yeah, that does sound right.
All right, great, thank you. Additional information. All right, any other questions or comments before we let Sue head back to her seat? Thank you so much for, for coming tonight, and for presenting this information, and letting the community know about the grant program, and the evaluations, and the good work that you are doing. We have several members of the Fire Safe Council here tonight, Mark Acuna and Patty Borelli up here.
Well, we thought the city council ought to have a, a little update on what we're doing with your money.
Yep, appreciate that. Um, I'll open item 6.4 up to the public. If anybody would like to comment on this, please make your way to the podium. All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the council, and we will move on to item seven, the consent calendar. So we polled item 7.6.
We didn't.
We shouldn't have done that. I, I spoke out of turn there, we need to pull it now.
Okay.
Yep, to do it right.
All right. All those in favor of pulling 7.6?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We got a, um, actually, public comment on consent calendar.
Um, okay, so, we will open items 7.1 through 7.5 up to the public at this time, if anyone would like to comment on the consent calendar. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council.
Okay, I'll move the consent calendar with the exception of 7.6, and we'll pull that.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second, although, Regina, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the public comment portion of our agenda tonight. Um, this portion of the meeting is reserved for people that wish to address the council on non-adjourned items. If you would like to make a comment, please step up to the podium when we open up public communication, and state your name voluntarily for the record, that is appreciated, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Ed Ingram, Placerville, Place Street. Been here a couple times before. Just want to say a couple of good things and bad things about City. Mr. Morris, appreciate all your efforts. You got a terrible job, but you do a great job at what you do. Thank you very much. City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, you guys do awesome. Chief Ren, thank you. Perfect. All the rest of you guys. Rebecca, all you guys, perfect. But, go green, right? Yay, go green, everybody go green. Keep it up. It's a pilot program, don't give up on it, please keep working with it, it's all good. Perfect, I love it, thank you. Couple other things, just for notice. Placerville Station Two, gonna be shut down for another year, possibly? Eh, darn it. You know what? These people doing donuts, speeding through the driveways over in the thing, stop them. Put some barricades up, let's control this thing. Let's get some signage up, police it, take care of it, okay? Some of your guys' vehicles been splattered by people doing donuts with rocks, public with dust, stop it, okay? Need more patrolling evenings. Yeah, darn it, it's getting towards winter and fall, getting colder. These guys are coming in, they're spending nights, hanging out longer, a little bit more of a pestering community. You live there. Put them in your front yard, please, okay? Or take them away from mine. All right, love it, perfect. Landscaping, eh, what the heck, you know what? On the west side of the new facility at Phase Two, yeah, get rid of the oak trees, put some good stuff in there, put some concrete, color it, it's all good, okay? Facelift, I don't know, my wife wrote this for me, I can't tell what it is. Anyway, you guys doing a great job, please continue. Perfect, thanks.
Thank you, Ed.
It was really nice to see a trip to Green, when you could be able to go downtown over Labor Day weekend, and be able to get through town, and go where you wanted to go, and not be absolutely jammed. I thought it was a great success, all three days.
Thank you, Sue.
Hello, Tammy Downs, long-term, well, homegrown, put it that way, in a different meaning of saying. Anyways, as far as the bus station goes, he already covered that, but it could really use a facelift. You're getting ready to start a whole new phase, and it's gonna look nice and pretty, and the bus station is just falling apart, looks horrible, and along with that comes, you know, it just looks trashy. Um, so, you guys have talked about doing some improvements with it? I don't know where those funds went, but apparently not there. Painting, there was something along that line at some point. And then, um, I noticed that, um, there is a clothes and shoe locker that has just appeared down at the gravel area, um, at the bus station. I don't know if that's really an appropriate place to have that, we're already having issues of people dumping things there for the homeless, or whoever, and I think that's just kind of encouraging more of that. I think maybe a better location might be like the Ivy House parking lot, you know, something that's a little more visible, just a suggestion. And once again, go green, it was a lifesaver. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Hi, I'm Mike Roberts. I'm with the County Cemetery Advisory Committee, and I would just like to ask the city to keep a better eye on Placerville Union Cemetery, to, it would be, the city used to lock the gates at night and open them in the morning. That hasn't happened now for about five years, so the cemetery is wide open for anybody to come in during the night and do whatever they want, and they do. So, uh, it would be great to see the gates locked, it would be great to see the cemetery patrolled. Thanks, any questions?
Thank you for your comment, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Hard to compete with such brevity. I'm thrilled about the future navigation center, which was approved after the turn down of Perks Court, and Perrault's, and that whole dance. And, um, you all, actually, yeah, you led the, you led the county in stepping forward with your compassion. I don't know why the feedback is here, but it doesn't, just.
Hang on, hang on one second, Jonathan, sorry about that. I'm gonna turn the podium off for a second, and.
So, um, a couple of things. A friend of mine overdosed at Hangtown Motel, she was, uh, doing straight fentanyl, should have killed her, uh, but when they, her daughter came out, 20-year-old, and screamed for help, it, it took quite a while to find some Norcan. I'd like to have the office there equipped with like five or 10 doses. Also, a fire extinguisher there, and a fire, uh, just offered, I, I think it would be beneficial and accepted by the, the owner there. Also up at Taqueria, Tijuana, at the other end of the 60 or 70-tenth. Planning to fail is failing to plan, but actually, it's better the other way, failing to plan is planning to fail. So, it is getting cold at night, and we're, they're looking at a January 15th opening of the navigation center, which is great. We have 600 homeless, quite a number of couch surfers, but also, maybe 100 are sleeping in their cars, and it's gonna be below freezing. I, I want to ask you to lead the way in compassion, to create something that's viable, when it gets to be freezing, but at least by mid-November until mid-January. That's 60 days, 48 seconds left. If it is illegal, and, and, and criminal to leave dogs and cats that are pets, open in a, in a fenced yard, when it is freezing rain and snow, let me ask you, is it also criminal to leave hundreds of people with no shelter during the same season, when it's freezing rain and snow? Of course, it is criminae. It is criminal, and we need to do something to plan ahead. You opened up last year the former DA Center. There is not gonna be any nomadic shelter, the churches are burned out, the volunteers are not stepping up, but we've got to ask you to lead the county to do something for the homeless. Time is up, God bless you, let's do it ahead of time.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, I don't know why there's so much feedback on that microphone, is there? Sorry about the, um, feedback, Jonathan, we, we could hear you, so.
Can I, can I get a credit tax that's next week?
All right, any other public comment?
I'll take his extra 10 seconds. You know, the last time when I talked about going down one way on Green, that it would be good that we didn't just accommodate those people traveling through Placerville, but actually promoted the city as a destination point. You know, much like old Sacramento, the second largest town in California during the gold rush, and here we are, the third. They make millions of dollars in tax revenue every year, from millions of visitors. And then, when I brought it up, I was reminded that the Chamber of Commerce has a contract with the city, and that's true. But I don't know of anyone who has a contract, and just leaves it up to the person who's receiving the contract, doing the contract work, to do the planning. They get direction. We go to a restaurant, we don't give them a credit card and say, hey, serve me what you want, nor when we want a house, do we give them a check and say, hey, build it any way you want. We give them direction, and that's really long overdue. It seems very appropriate. It can be put on your calendar in the future, before the end of the year, but it needs to be done, because we can make money and promote the city, uh, in a way that makes us unique. If you don't like the nickname, Hangtown, just use what was described in the 1860s by Nestorian, it was the capital of the Motherlode, and that's what we are. So, I strongly recommend that, and when we talk about the chamber, I'm a capitalist, I grew up in a family of merchants, I believe in competition. If you don't have competition, it doesn't necessarily produce the best work, because the same people also promote wineries, and they promote Apple Hill. So, it's kind of a divided interest. There's no reason for them to go out and do something original, because they have an exclusive contract, a no-bid contract, to, in essence, do what they want. We need to have you put out a contract, and come up with some money. I mean, my friend John DiAgostini gets a half million dollars to put a bronze statue in front of the place, and gets another half million just last month, for an armored vehicle. And then, from the county, gets a quarter of a million dollars for bullets, and has a provision in the resolution that says, they can come back for more money, quote, "as needed." Great deal. So, I just think you ought to do that. And, uh, and just to let you know, my personal experience of being on the, remember the PDA, the, uh, commerce folks had my email address, and I would get these invitations for mixers. I will tell you that next time, because we're only got about 15 seconds left, but it, it really illustrates why competition makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. All right, I see nobody else stepping up to the podium, so I will close public comment. There were a couple of questions that were raised regarding, um, the Placerville Station Two. Rebecca, that project, th, this is actually on our agenda for later on, um, the start of this project, but maybe you can just very quickly kind of give a timeline for when the gravel will be replaced with, you know, closed up, and.
So, these are all part of my talking points on a later agendized item, but I will say that, uh, we are working with the contractor and their start date, they have some pre-existing commitments on other projects. It could be as soon as November, it could be as late as March.
Okay. And then, as for painting the bus station, I believe, going off of memory, and maybe you guys can help me out here, is that it is included as a CIP project for this year's budget with Eldorado Transit Authority? Does that?
I, I'm, I'm unaware of that.
Okay. I'll check on that, and I'll, I'll get back to you, outside of this meeting. But I, I do believe that there are plans underway to make improvements.
I was gonna say, isn't that under the auspices of transit or transportation, which is?
Yes.
My understanding, we've had that discussion with him, Terry has, but it has not yet been funded by Transit.
Okay, I'll, I'll double check on that, because I do feel like I've seen that as a capital improvement project, but I'm going purely off of memory here, so, don't, don't quote me on that, but I, I will check on it. But I will check on it. All right.
Yeah, one more thing to add. So as far as the Narcan you were talking about, that is readily available at just about every pharmacy. And they can go in and ask for a prescription of that and get it received. So all those people up there have access to Narcan and even people that help other people or that are in the presence of other people that might be doing drugs legally have the ability to have access to Narcan. So there's, the availability of Narcan in this or naloxone, depending on where you're getting it, but the availability of that in our community is significant. Every prescription that comes in gets a, generally with a narcotic, gets a prescription of Narcan to come with it. So those, most all doctors are required to prescribe it or make sure they have it. Pharmacies are required to provide it if it's needed. So those, the availability is there for that.
So that daughter could have had it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But when someone overdoses, it's too late?
No, it isn't. Well, I don't want to get into the details of this. I just wanted to make sure that the availability is there. When then an overdose occurs and they're still alive, the availability of using it is there, so...
Thanks for providing that information. Regina, is there any written communication?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So we will close public comment. I want to thank you all for coming and providing feedback to the council. We really do appreciate hearing from you. And we are moving on to item nine. This is items polled from the consent calendar. So we polled 7.6. And thank you, Dennis, for doing that. I was going to poll this item because I have a conflict on November 15th, and I believe, Michael, you do as well.
I do as well. Correct.
So I would like to propose November 9th for that meeting if it works for everybody else.
That works for me.
Let me check. Yep.
Okay.
And I confirmed that the facility is available that night for the meeting.
I'm giving up another meeting.
I haven't talked to staff yet.
I was gonna say, how about staff?
Thank you. Okay. So I would make a motion that we...
So move...
Amen this to the date.
We amend this and we'll meet the 9th instead of the 15th.
November 9th. Yep. All right.
I'll second. I'll second.
All right. We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes again.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot, public comment. Thank you. We'll open this up to public comment. 7.6. All right. I see none. I'm gonna close public comment. Thank you. All right. So we have nothing under ordinances tonight, nothing under item 11, public hearings, which brings us to our discussion items. And we'll start with 12.1. This is to adopt a resolution awarding grants to be, to selected applicants for the community benefit grant program. And Mr. Morris has this staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So included in this year's budget, the council included $5,000 for community grants. And in July, the council approved the program that was designed and asked staff to begin advertising the program and set up those guidelines and receiving applications. We did that and the applications were due by September 15th. We did receive, I should know that number. We received, I believe it was, 11, 12 applications. And evaluated those based on the criteria. You appointed council members Borelli and Noel to be the committee to review those applications. They did that based on the requirements of the grant and came back with the recommendations that are in your report. And we received a recommendation, I'll go through what these are, from Community Pride Kathy Lishman to refurbish the planters in the Foxlot. That one was approved for $1,000. Also from Community Pride from Josette Johnson regarding repair and add lighting to the Snowshoe Thompson Monument. For those, if any, that don't know where that is, it's at the corner of the Mel's parking lot, right at the corner of Pacific and, or excuse me, Sacramento and Main Street. That was approved for $500. El Dorado Historical Society submitted an application to restore the Snowshoe Thompson mural that's on the corner there, also at Sacramento and Main Street on the side of the building. Submitted application for $1,000. It was approved for $850. They noted in their application that they would probably be willing to increase, match some of those funds to make that a complete project. Sierra Community Access TV submitted a proposal to do a production regarding the history of Main Street in Placerville. They requested $1,000. That was approved for $750. Varied History, a proposal was submitted by Andrew Bondersmith. That, through request of $1,000, that was approved for $1,000. And then Boy Scouts of America and Eagle applicant submitted a project. He wants to install a disc golf course at Markham Middle School. And he requested $1,000. However, in his application, it mentioned a hole sponsors would cost $900 to sponsor a hole. And so the committee approved $900 for that to be a hole sponsor at Markham Middle School. The other applications, I'll mention quickly that were not approved. One was, actually came from Orin Miller. For those of you who may or may not know, he's the actual artist for the Snowshoe Thompson mural. He did not meet the nonprofit status as we had required. However, since the El Dorado Historical Society also submitted the same project, we believe that that will be done and will be funded as part of that process. Moore submitted an application for their outdoor gardens, requested $1,000. That wouldn't, in the whole competition process, was not approved. Felt like there was also a lot of synergy going on with that project and it is moving forward, so it was not approved. The Fire Safe Council requested funding for education materials and dumpsters. We felt like we already gave the Fire Safe Council $5,000 and didn't feel it was appropriate, decided not to give them more under this grant. The Elders Community Fund requested materials for their resource center. The committee did not feel that that met the goals of the grant program, which were beautification and tourism. I forget the third word in there, but generally that type of thing. Did not feel it met those requirements. And then the El Dorado County Veterans submitted an application for some bronze sculptures that they want, Veterans Monument, that they want to install at the Veterans Monument. Their total project is $200,000. They requested the $1,000 and the committee did not fund that one. Just in the competition of the others, they felt the others were more important. So that's an outline of what the committee did. Councilmembers Noel and Borelli, if you want to add anything that I missed, I'm happy to let you do that.
I don't think you mentioned the landscaping at 515 Main Street that we...
Oh, yes. You're right. I skipped over that one. That was from, where is it? El Dorado Gold requested $1,000 to complete landscaping at their building that they have on the corner of Bedford and Main Street, 515 Main Street. And the committee did not approve that grant also, so...
Do you want to say anything more about that?
Yeah, I just, like, I know we had looked at the two landscape projects and those are on private property. And so with the limited funds, we really focused on the public venue. And also, you know, our purpose was history, tourism, and beauty. And so the other ones, you know, not all of them really seemed to fall into that. So we tried to do the most we could with that $5,000 to focus on the public venue and the mission of those three items.
Well, I want to thank you and Patty for putting the work in and going through this.
You know, and it's not an easy chore because everybody, I mean, they're all great projects.
They're all great projects.
And, you know, so we had to really kind of sit through it and, like Jackie said, and, you know, so that we could come up with what we did.
But it seems like your reasoning was very sound. And I think that we, you know, it's great to see people applying for this. And with all great projects, that really benefit the community, and I'm excited for the ones that are selected.
And we felt too that the ones, even though we didn't finance it, it's gonna, they're gonna happen, so...
Yeah.
I was really happy when you didn't pick me for this committee. And I really appreciate the time and energy because I know what it takes mentally and emotionally to go through this. And, you know, you're letting people down, but you're also helping people out. It's a real, you know, it takes a toll on you and it's a commitment, you know, it's actually, you're putting something out in the community and you've become a target for some people if they don't like it. And so I really appreciate what you guys did. And I'm, you know, I wouldn't mind doing it, but I'm really glad you guys did it. And yeah, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Any other questions for Cleve or the ad hoc committee that worked on this? Comments? No? Okay. We'll open this, do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. We'll open this up to the public if anyone would like to comment on 12.1.
Mike Roberts, again, not to complain this time, but to say thank you. Appreciate it. Our Pioneer Cemeteries connect us with the past of our community and they build the fabric of our community. They build community. We saw it on Saturday at the cleanup. It was a lot of fun and people got engaged with each other and with the place. So thanks a lot. We'll try to earn it. Appreciate it. See you on Saturday.
Thank you, Mike.
Hello. Nicole Gottberg, Placerville resident. I just had a question, as some of these are partially funded. I agree with the whole list and I agree with doing that. But if for some reason they aren't able to raise the additional funds to move forward, is there some sunset date or means by which that money would come back to the city council if the project doesn't proceed? Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole. All right. I see no other comments, so I'll close public comment on 12.1. In terms of the partially funded projects, I know that, this was a question that I asked when we were going over the agenda review, and I know that all the ones that are partially funded, they did say that the project would move forward even if they were not granting the full amount. Do you have any more information about, you know, timelines or any sort of like accountability for the...
I also wanted to make one more comment. On the one that, the Snowshoe Thompson Monument repair and lighting, we actually decided to fund the lighting, not the monument repair. So just to be specific, the $500 would cover the cost of that part of the project. They don't need to raise any more money for that. And, you know, we had talked about the city looking into what would be the monument repair because we didn't actually, they didn't have a quote for that. We didn't have any idea what that was. So we funded what we knew. And then, you know, that's something that we can still look at as a city in the future for those sorts of things. But as far as the other partial funding, I do have a bunch of notes we made on that. For, like, the history on Main had like $200 for lunches and stuff like that. So we said, well, you know, they have to buy their own lunch. So we felt pretty confident that that project could continue also. And like I said, the refurbished said, the Historical Society said they would put matching funds, so if they matched what the city had put up, that should cover the cost of that. So we felt pretty confident that everything would still move ahead according to the notes that were submitted.
Okay. And then in terms of if, I don't think that this will happen with these projects, but it is a good point just to think about, you know, if we did grant funds to an applicant and the project was never completed, is there anything in place to...
So I think for the most part, we will require them to show that they're fully funded before we give them the money. That'll be kind of our last phase, so the project will...
Did they completed the project?
Well, no, the, I don't know. We talked...
We didn't set a timeline, did we?
We did not. We did, we talked about whether or not we would require them to complete the project first. And we also discussed if, as long as they can show us that they need that funding before they complete it, that, you know, it might have to be paid upfront, we can work with them on that. We did have, all of these did say, by the way, that if it was only partially funded, it would still move forward. I believe there was one that said probably, but I'm, but they all did check the yes box on that. The one concern was, that I had a little bit, but I think there is a timeline on it, is actually the disc golf course. He needs to raise $9,000 to do that for 10 holes that he wants to do, $900 per hole. So I think that's one that we want to make sure that he has. I know that, I know the scout program, he does have a deadline to be able to meet that requirement for his Eagle Scout project, so that might be a timeline for him. But I have no idea what that is either. So I think that we kind of play it by ear with them and see where they're at. If we go, you know, the end of this fiscal year and they're still not there, we may need to come back and reevaluate. But that's kind of a timeline that I would look at.
Okay. Thank you. I've got to say, this was one of the budget items that I pushed on and not everyone was as enthusiastic as I was about doing this grant program. But it does make me really happy to see the city taking part in supporting the good ideas and good work that comes out of its residents to make the community a better place. So I'm really happy to see this item. And I once again want to thank everybody for their hard work on the committee, making the tough decisions on which ones to fund. Any other comments?
Well, if you two want to move it. Okay, I'll move item 12.1. As presented, yep.
All right. We have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Who was, who was the second?
Jackie.
Jackie.
Okay. Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Noel?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. 12.2. This is to appoint a public member to the cannabis community benefit committee. And Mr. Morris has this staff report to me.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, in 2018, you adopted an order to allow retail cannabis businesses in the city. Part of that program talked about a cannabis benefit fund or program that the city would do. The city adopted a program in 2020, which basically requires that each cannabis business contribute 1% of their gross revenues to the, to the program. And that has been going on since they started. There was a phase-in period for that. Quarter one, they did 0.25%. Quarter two, 0.5. Quarter three, 0.75. And then after a full year, they contribute 1% going forward. So the, our two businesses that we have open and operating have been doing that. They've both been open for actually a year now, just Sacred Roots just completed their first year. So both are now contributing the full 1% of their revenues towards this program. When you set up the program, you defined the members, which would be the chief of police or designate city manager or designate the community services director. And then you had one public member. And at that time, we assumed three cannabis business representatives, one from each of our businesses that we anticipated having. Since that time, as you know, we've only approved two cannabis retail businesses, so there would only be two representatives from that. So you may want to take a look at that, something to consider if you want to change that. I believe this was adopted by resolution, so we need to bring back a resolution to change that. Because of the fact there's only two cannabis business representatives, it makes that an even number, which we usually try to avoid on committees, to avoid ties that we can't resolve. But I'll leave that up to you whether or not, this is, I think, a little bit easier. I'm not real concerned about that issue, but we could take a look at that. For the program, you address the following potential projects, programs that could be part of the, used for the funding. Public safety equipment, city youth recreation scholarship program, Placerville Police Department Cadet Program, community cleanup costs, including trail maintenance, student scholarships, drug outreach, education materials and programs, Habitat for Humanity Senior Assistance Program, youth programs, Boys and Girls Club example, and others that may come up. So it's not inclusive. It's not that they have to fit in that specific guidelines. There's others that could be raised that the committee could look at. At this time, what we are looking for is to appoint a public member. I've talked to some of you about this. If we don't have that tonight, we do not have to do it tonight. There's no real... If we don't have that tonight, we do not have to do it tonight. There's no real deadline on that to say we need to move forward. I noted in the report, as of June 30th, we had $34,000 in the fund. So there, that money is available to use toward these programs and probably a little bit more now since we've earned since, since June 30th. So at this time, I'll, I'll give it back to you, Mayor, to see how we want to proceed with this. We could, there's, there's options if you wanted to. We could put out a request, a recruitment, if you wanted to do it that way. If you want to just talk to people and recommend someone and then vote on them, we can do it that way too. So I'll leave it up to you.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have people that they've already spoken to about this or would like to appoint?
You know what I would like to suggest maybe? Is that since we only have two of the cannabis operating, that we maybe have two public members instead of, you know, so that way we'll have the seven-member committee instead of six.
I agree.
And I, I think it would be, and I know this is more time consuming, but to have folks maybe submit a reason why they would like to serve on this committee instead of us. Because we don't know all the great people out there, you know?
And I've reached out to a couple of people, but I haven't gotten any response.
I think, I think that we, I think that they should contact their council member of choice and ask that they be considered. I don't want to go into a whole selection process. I think that the five of us should be able to figure this out.
Maybe we could invite folks to call us?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If they, you know, let's, and does it have to be a city, a city, somebody that lives in the city?
I think it should be.
Yep.
I think.
There's no guideline to say it has to be, but I think that was anticipated.
Certainly, certainly the funds should be spent within the city limits.
Yes, those have to be.
But that the, the people that we're appointing live in the city limits.
I was going to say resident or business owner.
Or business owner? Mm-hmm.
Oh, I guess, I guess that would be okay.
Yeah.
I would like it to be a city resident. You know, the county has their own program for doing what they want, whatever they're going to do in the county. And this is really a city program.
The only, the only kind of nuance to that is there's a lot of people that live just on the edge of the city whose kids go, you know, do clubs in the cities, the parks in the city, and they might have, you know.
We do have a map of a sphere of influence.
We have this.
But I think, yeah, but.
But.
How complicated do you guys want to make this?
Very simple. Let's make it, let's make it a city, city resident and.
I mean, we have 11,000, almost 11,000 people.
We should be able to find two people out of 11,000.
This seems like the funnest committee to be on. So I would think that people would be.
I know, just chomping at the bit to get on.
To figure out where to put this.
So we could put something out on.
Facebook.
Facebook or something to contact a, a, a council member of their choice.
And let's bring it back at the next meeting.
Yep, I agree.
So, so we're going to.
So we'll bring a resolution back also to add another additional public member.
Can we do that?
That's not a whole lot of time.
Can we do that quick enough?
We can do this.
Yeah, we can get it on the next, next meeting.
I mean, to add the other member to, because we have to change the ordinance and everything.
Well, I know we can, but.
It's just defined by resolution, not ordinance.
Commitment.
No, just so they would find out.
Yeah.
Okay.
We got this.
So that is, I think.
Maybe we can get it.
We could table this until next meeting.
Well, do we want to, we, well.
With those instructions.
Do you need a motion because we're going to add, we want to add another?
You, you should do, you should do that, yeah. I have a motion to add one member and bring it back.
I'll make a motion that we add.
Hang on, hang on. I'm going to pause it. Let's do public comment.
Oh, you're right.
Okay. We will open up 12.2 for public comment. Okay.
That was a fast.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we add an additional public member and that the public members be residents of the city of Placerville.
Second. All right.
And that they come, can I, can I ask that you add that they bring this back at next meeting?
And that they, yeah, and that this item is brought back at the next city council meeting.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. And for anyone watching this meeting from home, please, if you are interested in being in the cannabis community benefit committee, which will probably meet, what, two or three times a year, Cleve?
I would think so.
And determine where the cannabis business dollars are put to use in the community. Get in touch with one of your council members.
They'll make a recommendation back to the council on those projects, but yeah.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to item 12.3. And this is approving a construction contract for the Placerville Station 2 Phase 1. And Ms. Neese, our city engineer, has this report.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to present this item to you this evening. It's been 16 years in the making. So the Placerville Station 2 project is one of those projects that everybody knew about, but almost knew nothing about. The site, often referenced as the dirt lot next to the park and ride, is about to become so much more than that. And I'm happy to say it also completes the work on Mosquito Road within the city limits. We can finally check that road off the list for now. Placerville Station 2 is the second phase to a project started in the early 2000s. The city purchased the land using an AQMD grant and also began scoping a project and environmental clearance and then the search for funding. In 2006, it was adopted as a project in the annual budget and funded through a grant through the Sacramento Regional Transit, sponsored by the Federal Transit Authority. Over time, utility work was added and then removed and then included in other projects. There are other parts of this journey, like considering this to be the site of a future hotel possibly. And after several years of patiently waiting for an answer, that answer was no. And staff had the information it needed to keep pursuing this project to construction. Placerville Station 2 isn't just a park and ride project. It's what I would consider a quality of life project. The work will include significant improvements to the functional use of Mosquito Road at the US 50 on-off ramp, including a dedicated right turn lane to direct travelers to Main Street and Broadway. It also includes significant improvements to the trail network. In 2019, the city was blessed with a congestion mitigation air quality funds grant to cover the cost overruns on the park and ride and the trail improvements. At the end of 2020, the city completed the lion's share of the work on Mosquito Road, except for the area at the park and ride for several key reasons. The improvements required construction of frontage to the lot and the resultant conform paving and final overlay. And there were significant pedestrian safety improvements that needed to be done as part of the project at the crossing of the Eldorado Trail located at the intersection of Clay and Mosquito. Through staff turnover, consultant buyouts, CPUC determinations and approval, extensive utility relocations, potential development, second environmental document and clearance, funding shortfalls, accelerated improvements on Mosquito Road, and a pandemic, this project has had its fair share of challenges. I've worked on a lot of that for most of my career. And I can honestly say that this was one of the toughest ones I've ever seen delivered yet.
Wow.
The staff report does a great job of overviewing how we got here and how the bidding went with receiving three bids from Veer Camp, Martin Brothers, and Lund Construction. Veer Camp was the low bidder at $1,371,854.48 and deemed responsible and responsive, and staff is recommending award of this contract to Veer Camp. Work is anticipated to start at the soonest opportunity in their scheduling. It could be as soon as November or as late as March of next year. We're working with the contractor to get a firm date. I also wanted to highlight the staff that worked hard on this. First to Director Rivas. Pierre's help was crucial when we had to circulate the second environmental document for this project in 2018. Thank you, Pierre. And second is to Corey Sheestal of the engineering department. Corey's determination and tenacity to deliver a project like this is just really kind of a testimony to his character. I affectionately refer to him as king of the dead dog jobs because somehow he always finds a way to breathe life into a project and then carry the half-dead body across the finish line. So thanks for all your hard work, Corey. This was definitely a win. That concludes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Rebecca. And I'm really pleased to see this moving forward finally, after all the challenges that have happened with this project. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah. I don't think anybody really recognizes or understands the, how much it takes to get a project like this over the finish line. And it, it, most of our projects in this town are not as bad as this, but they have similar constraints and requirements and federal, state funding and, you know, because we, we work really hard to get matching funds and grants and, and competitive grants that we're constantly applying for, working through EDCDC for things. And it's, it, not to mention EDCDC's efforts. I don't know if they have much effort on this particular project.
They did.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It went through our work program, yeah.
Yeah, well, we submitted the application to them in 2019 that got us the CMAC funds that actually fully funded the rest of the project in terms of the park and ride and trail components. So, and one of the actions on this evening is for Measure L budget appropriation. And that covers the rest of the Mosquito Road improvements. So it's going to look really, really nice in that whole area.
And people are going to drive by and go, oh, look, a nice parking lot. Little do they know how much it takes to get to sort of the finish line. So, yeah, right. So, so thank you for that.
$10 million.
And as you mentioned in the staff report, it's not just the parking lot. It's the sewer infrastructure, water sewer infrastructure under Mosquito Road, trail improvements, just a whole bunch of things kind of coming together at this one spot that's going to make some real noticeable improvements to this part of town. So, yeah, it's exciting.
Rebecca, thank you. A question on the utilities of PG&E and AT&amp;T. Are we looking at any significant delays because of, on their, because of them? I know we, we've run into these issues before, especially with, with the PG&E. Are we finally like, to the point where we can?
So we actually got them moved already. Yeah, we went through some utility agreements, you know, thankfully approved by city council some time ago. And they've already done their relocation work.
Everything's done.
Yeah, so, and actually originally, the dreaded pole that was in the middle of the drive aisle off of Clay Street was not included. And Mr. Akuna did just the lion's share of making a couple of phone calls. And I said, well, you know, can they even just consider it? It would be wonderful if we could get that relocated. And he called a couple of folks and he said, well, here's an idea. And we came up with a game plan and submitted it. And they snuck in the design under the radar and did that. So, you know, and that was actually the local staff here at the PG&E office. The local staff at PG&E here are, they're, the engineers there are just phenomenal. Joe Kemp specifically was amazing.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
I did have one question.
Sure.
Can you explain what a bio swale is?
So anytime that you pave a pervious area and make it impervious by, by either asphalt or concrete, you are required to have a pre and post, you know, drainage runoff equal each other. You don't want to add additional impact to the storm drain system. In addition to that, you're also required to clean the water. And so this swale does both of those. So it actually will clean the discharge, the water, excuse me, the overland release, storm drain discharge. It directs it directly into the swale. It cleans it through the growing media and it cleans it through the plants. And then it gets metered into the storm drain system.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Rebecca, I want, on, on the map, it shows five pull-through bus RV parking spaces?
Yes.
So that is not for overnight parking for RV, right?
No, no. The intent of having those pull-through stalls, which actually was what we classified as bid alternative one, we're actually going to make them concrete. The intent of that was to provide a location where we could place tour buses. We don't have a very good location to do that in town. So it actually has kind of a couple of uses. It has the tour bus use. But it also has any kind of additional, you know, transit, Amtrak uses that park and ride facility as well. So it does have some, some overflow parking for specific routes.
So, and I've seen it here in town.
Yes.
When buses come in and they drop, I, I've watched the people get off the bus so that they can, you know, enjoy the town. And then the buses have no place to go, you know, the, I feel sorry for the drivers at times I've watched them. But, so that's a great idea. I, I'm glad that you included this. This is, you know.
Yeah, the TV.
But, so how, I, I guess this is going to fall then on our police department to keep people from saying, ooh, there's a spot where we can stay the night or?
Well, we have an existing, we have an existing ordinance in place that prevents that for that lot. You know, I believe that there are some permitted parking, but, you know, we, we do not really allow that as it is right now.
I know we don't, but it's just, this is going to make it more visible.
Right. The other thing too is a very clear lesson I've learned with any kind of development or improvements is when you bring up an area and you bring people to an area, that particular element seems to dissipate.
Okay.
So that, you know, we always want to develop, you know, and, and we always, not develop, but we always want to improve and build an area up.
Sure.
Make it nicer because it does, it does, it's like the broken window theory, basically.
Well, hopefully this will help Mr. Ingram.
I hope so too. Yeah, they've been very, very patient and very good to us through all 16 years.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, we'll open this up to the public.
Tammy, once again, I'll probably forget a few things. Once again, the broken window is the bus station currently. And as far as, like you were saying, encouraging people to stay overnight, we already have that issue this last week. We've got three down there. Been down there since, well, I've been gone camping most of the summer, but I came back Sunday. They're still there. And it's hard for the PD because they'll tell them to move and then they go, we will, and then they don't. So, yeah, we have a homeless issue already. And so my fear is, yeah, I don't want it to look, I mean, I'm not really, well, like eastbound Fairlane Park and Ride, that looks like an RV park. And isn't that a park and ride and not overnight parking? And once again, the signage, no one's really paying attention to that. And I do believe the 11, I think the time needs to be changed and how long people can park there, you know? So, okay, done with that. Another suggestion with the, the Phase 2 with existing phase, the west side, west side of the Greenbelt area, which is next to my house, we do our best in weed eating, you know, certain portion of it for our own safety, fire control. Plus, I mean, I've always, it's been, the house has been in the family for 50 years. But I really suggest tying that in somehow with some sort of fencing to keep the homeless out. And suggests, you know, vegetation spraying to be further back from the fence because right now it's an orange fence construction. And it does its best to keep the homeless out along with me. But, yeah, so if we could get some sort of fencing in there, I think that would be much better. Metal fencing of some sort would, anything that would look better, look at my fence. I got green vinyl chain link fence. It looks very nice, ties in great with the bus station. But my fear is that west side, Greenbelt area next to my house, you know, needs a little more protection from visitors. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Sue Rodman, Measure L Committee. And we have been cheering on the buses, the riding park or whatever we're going to call this. And for several years, I think almost ever since the inception of the Measure L Committee, we have been saying, yes, this is one that we really need to do. So I am very happy to see this goes forward because it's been eyesore for enough years. It needs to get fixed, so. Yay for Rebecca and Corey. And yay for them for getting PG&E to actually cooperate because that was kind of a stumbling block for a while, I know. So, go team.
Thank you, Sue.
Hi again, Ed Ingram. Well, I forgot one thing. The bus station right now currently has a camera system in it right now.
Has what?
A camera system, safety system, but it's utilized through the county itself, not primarily the city. So to get any kind of reference from it, the city has to go to the county to get pictures and whatever. So the new Phase 2, is the city going to, is that part of your project? They're going to have a camera system itself for security for those in the area? And what are the limitations of usage during the day and not during the night? Is it going to be posted kind of a deal situation? And the west side, what you're referring to is a very steep, high embankment of just total native slate. And from the point of the northeast corner, northwest corner. total native slate, and from the point of the northeast corner, northwest corner, to our property line, it's just a gentle slope, and it's vegetated up to a wooded area. Is there going to be some kind of a system put in there, like fencing or a concrete barrier, that no one can access up into the Greenbelt, which was typically incorporated when that first bus station was developed? Kind of a questionnaire, so there's no access for fire or any other kind of access? But the cameras would be a good idea, and since this project's going to be put off for a bit of a time, is there a way that we can construct something that will prevent these vandalisms, and individuals that come in and like playing, doing donuts in there and splattering cards with stuff, kind of prohibiting access to that area until the construction can start? Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. All right, I see no one else stepping up to the podium, so I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Rebecca, there were a couple of questions that came up regarding fencing, would you like to address any of those?
Sure, I guess I'll start first with the scope of work. So the scope of work for this project is focused primarily on the dirt lot. We have a little bit of paving over in the original Phase One because of the damage from the buses, but not, we didn't have anything planned as far as fencing or anything on that north side closest to Clay Street. We are aware that there is a camera system there, I believe it's actually accessed, I think through transit, and then there aren't plans to add in a camera or surveillance at our lot currently. As far as parking lot timeframes and tightening up, I would, and, and the enforcement of that, too, I would defer to our police department, and I would work with them on if there's anything that needs to be revised as far as the parking code do, goes to. Let's see, I think that covered majority of the questions. Oh, constructing something, preventing vandalism until the construction starts. And we hadn't anticipated that, once this contract actually gets awarded, it actually goes under the, I guess, the oversight of the contractor, so at that point, they decide when they start physically taking control of the site, but we, at, you know, at that point, we're the landowner, we could direct them to do something, but just be aware it would be a change order.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And Chief Ren, do you have anything to add in regards to enforcement of this area, or?
Yes, there's no, there's currently no overnight camping permitted in any of the parking lots, so we can take care of that. If a vehicle's parked unoccupied in the lot, then there are certain provisions of our ordinance in the vehicle code where we can notice the vehicle, requiring it to move within a specified period of time, if not, it'd be subject to towing. That's if the signage is, is correct, and we can definitely check on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, would anyone?
Can I, can I just add, Rebecca's correct, the, the cameras are controlled by transit, they monitor those. I know that they, they tried to give us access to them, Joe, can you comment? I, I don't remember what, it was a different format or something, so we had a hard time making it work for us?
Yeah, two different systems, and they weren't talking to each other, it would require an upgrade on our part, and we just didn't have, at that time, the funding to, to look at that. And they, we don't necessarily sit, have somebody sitting staring at the cameras anyway, so as long as we know that there's an ability to record an incident or an event, we can always go back and, and pull that recording for evidentiary purposes.
And I believe transit does have that ability, so we can.
And we've, I've been and inspected their system before, and it's, it's a very, very good system. It just doesn't, they've used a different vendor than.
Right.
And it just didn't.
Interesting. And unfortunately, I'm fairly certain that nobody's there watching them at transit either in the middle of the night.
They, yeah.
So it's not really a preventative.
Yeah.
Quick response type of surveillance.
It's more of an after, after the fact, yeah.
Okay.
You know, if we had a, if we had a, you know, I, not necessarily a, you know, a multiple view system, but if we had an overall of the, the transit facility at night, so we could see people walking into it, or see cars driving into it, that would be, that would be doable, but as it stands now, between the parking garage and the downtown camera system, and we're talking 30 cameras that one dispatcher views, so there are times when, when they do get lucky and catch somebody, but if they're, if they're busy, it's just, we utilize that for the documentation of, of an incident to be used for investigative purposes.
Okay. Well, it sounds like that may be something worth looking at in future budget considerations for, it'd probably be good to have eyes on our parking rides, especially if there's.
You know, maybe working with transit.
Continual problems, but hopefully also, or adding a city camera, but.
But work with transit, maybe they would have access to getting money, more so than we would, you know?
Um, but also hopefully, you know, the improvements at this location will deter and prevent.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah.
A lot of issues, so, okay, we then, I would entertain a motion if anyone?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the three items as, as explained in our agenda.
Well, second?
All right, we have a first and a second. Regina, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is 12.4, and this is to approve a change order on the contract for the town hall equipment, and Mr. Zeller has the support, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, staff had worked with Creation Networks Incorporated to establish a cost for base upgrade to the chambers, which consisted of two cameras, three wireless microphones, and three TV monitors for the council and the audience. And it was determined when going through that project that two more cameras, two more microphones, and two more TV monitors would best serve the needs for meetings and emergency operations use. And that request for a new project total was received prior to the September 13th meeting, and it was awarded at $61,452.87. There was a miscommunication between staff and the vendor on the additional equipment, and those errors were not discovered until a post-award review of the itemized proposal. And it turned out that the two cameras and two additional TV monitors were not in the new project total, and so staff is requesting that the cost of these and the associated materials and labor be awarded as a change order in the amount of $12,441.50. It pretty much came out to around $10,000 in missed equipment and another $2,400 in additional labor to install it. And so as far as the funding element goes, we're looking at requesting approval for $7,409 additional appropriation from ARPA funding, and the other $5,000 or so coming from general fund contingency and undesignated fund balance for the project. The specs were fairly technical, and I thought I was counting the right products, but it turned out to be associated transmission equipment, and so that was, that was my mistake. And so brought this back to the council to see if we can get that additional funding in place and move forward with the project, and I can take any questions.
All right, thank you. Terry, any questions?
I did, I didn't see in any of this paperwork any kind of warranty that we're going to get, we're buying all this new fancy equipment and new screens, do, I was just wondering what kind of warranty we get with this.
We have a larger proposal that was part of the original submittal in September, and that covers the training, the warranty on the equipment, and all the other associated information, and I can get that to the council.
But we do have a warranty, I mean, it is.
Yes, warranty is part of the, part of the package.
Do you know if it's like a 30-day or a three-year?
I believe it's a one-year warranty.
Okay, on the equipment?
On the equipment.
Okay.
And we also have the, the, one of the reasons we chose Creation Networks is because they have done work in the area and became highly recommended. The Tahoe Community College put in a lot of work, and they had a lot of training that needed to be done, and a lot of upgrades and small things, and this, this vendor was very flexible with that, and so I think they're going to serve our needs well, now that we've got the, the hard costs hammered out.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis. I've got to say, I, this, this item gives me a little bit of heartburn, because it just seems like so much money for, you know, the 50 people that maybe watch our meetings between in-person and online, and when I, when we had originally talked about ARPA funding going to town hall improvements, I had other improvements, it's kind of like higher priority than TVs and cameras, but that being said, you know, our, our timer doesn't work, our camera, our.
Yellow screen?
Present yellow screen, our microphone was cutting out on people, which all highlights the need for this, it's just, it seems like a lot, and it, I don't want to spend any more than this, than this change order.
Done.
Done.
You know, I tell you, though, when you go to other cities and you attend their meeting, we are so antiquated.
We are.
I mean, it's embarrassing. We, we really have to do something.
Yeah.
And unfortunately nowadays, you know, it's costly, we could have done it a few years ago, we, we've been talking about this for years, of trying to do something with this whole situation. And it just hasn't, it's been a low priority, but we really need to set the bar higher, I'm sorry.
Well, it's just, I mean, if you watch this from home, you can't see any of the presentations, you can't see any of the information, and we really should be able to provide this to the public so that they can participate and, and look up and see what's going on. I mean, it's kind of a barrier for information for me.
And I'm thinking in the future, there might be other uses that are going to come up, too, you know, where we'll be able to utilize.
Well, it does reference the EOC, so hopefully, should we need an EOC, that this system will serve it well.
I really don't think that we have utilized it as much perhaps as we really, you know, to, to give, maybe, there's something really important going on in the city, and, you know, we could call a special, you know, we have our, we call meetings for down here, but a lot of people can't get to us, but if they had a reason for turning on, you know, Channel 2, or they could view it.
Yeah. And if it was less painful to watch than it currently is, where it's like, what, who's talking? So, yeah, I mean, it is necessary, it just seems like a lot, but I don't want, I don't want anymore.
It's, it's, it's an important investment, and I, even, even, to make sure we get it done right, I appreciate, you know, Terry having to come back and, and ask for a little more, but I think it's important that we get it done right, and do it the first time, or the second time, but it's the first time in 40 years, so it's the first time.
It's overdue, technology has changed a lot in 40 years, too. All right, I'll open this up to the public, 12.4.
Sue Rodman, one more time. I think that we're forgetting that we're also looking at an emergency operations center for here, and that could be highly critical, the Calnor Fire, other fires, we've had people who were evacuated who came here, we need to have an ability to support those emergency operations, and right now we don't have it. So I think that's, that's something, it's not just for town hall meetings, it's not just for city council meetings, I think we need to remember that it's also to give us a basis for the emergency operations.
Thank you, Sue. All right, seeing no one else from the public stepping up to the podium, I will close public comment on 12.4 and bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
All right, item 12.5, this is acknowledge and file the ARPA budget status report and provide direction to staff, and City Manager Morris has the second.
Actually, Dave.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
Not a problem. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you may recall, on March 11th, 2021, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, to assist the country in recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic. The Act provides funding for state, local, and tribal governments, including $65 billion for cities nationwide. Since that time, the city has received a total of $2,673,298 in ARPA funding. ARPA funds must be encumbered or committed by the end of 2024 and expended, meaning cash paid, by the end of 2026. At your meeting held on September 27th, the council requested a status update on the ARPA budget and its associated uses, which staff will present tonight. Including in your budget action in the previous agenda item, the total ARPA budgets, $2,173,298, have been budgeted for specific purposes at this time. I'd like to quickly review the, I call it the pumpkin bar spreadsheet, that has all the budget items on it. So starting up top, you have the four-by-four pickup truck, number one, all the way down to number three, the two Ford interceptors, that has all been spent. The number four, fuel reduction treatment for city property, we've encumbered all but $196,000, and we'd like to talk about perhaps using that $196,000 for other things. Number five, the Lions Park Large Shelter, has not been encumbered, and staff would actually like some time to approach the Lions Club to see if they'd be interested in funding that project. That could potentially free up that $63,000. The town hall emergency operations, you just discussed that entire $64,000 has been encumbered. The pool filter sand replacement, we still want to do that, but however, it hasn't been encumbered yet. The GIS software training, that's been encumbered and spent. The corporation yard revitalization, very important project, hasn't been encumbered, but we just want to leave it there for that project, as well as the number 10, public safety building, again, that project's in process, we haven't utilized that 250 yet, but we plan on doing that, so. Number 11, citywide marketing program, the chambers, off and running with that, that's been spent or encumbered entirely. The computer equipment replacement, $54,000, that's been, for the most part, completely encumbered. The sewer water bill assistance program, we actually, because of the sewer and water arrears program we were able to do and provide some of our residents some real relief, as well as the low-income household water assistance program, which is still active, we felt that perhaps the council should consider utilizing those funds for something else, because there's a lot of resources for our customers already. Number 14, the broadband master plan, that's underway, fully encumbered. The one-time distribution, number 15, was paid to city employees. The 16, historic city hall roof project, $98,000, there's obviously a need there, and matter of fact, we're probably going to recommend that that be liquidated partially to pay for some improvements at 525 Main Street, due to the red tagging of the old city hall, historic city hall, so. And then 17, the senior management analyst position, that is an active recruitment, we don't, we are pursuing grant funds, but for right now, we would like to keep that there. The contribution to Eldorado County on page two, number 18, the $287,500, that was originally for the Perks Court proposal, which didn't happen, but fortunately, the Fair Lane project did. However, at this time, it doesn't sound like the county has a need for that funding, so it is not, there's an opportunity to liquidate that and use it for other things. And then 19, the broadband conduit, that was fully spent, $30,000. So, again, right now, and that, number 23, you just budgeted for, to finish the emergency town hall improvements, so that leaves the $500,000 for corporation yard, which hasn't been budgeted, but again, that's an important project, we don't recommend touching that. But if you add up line, excuse me, line item four, five, 13, and 18, which at this time, we feel potentially we could liquidate those for other purposes, that gives you $596,839 that you could use for other things like broadband, homeless programs, beautification, additional safety improvements to town hall, I know that was mentioned. additional safety improvements to town hall, I know that was mentioned earlier, uh, and needed repairs to the downtown public restroom. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if the council would like to provide direction on the use of those funds. Thank you.
Could, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no, it's your meeting.
After you.
Can we, um, thank you. Can we allocate these, reallocate these funds tonight if we chose to?
I, I probably wouldn't recommend it because it wasn't specifically, um, agenda as that way. I would recommend you could give us direction and we could bring that back for the specific allocations.
Thank you. That's my only question at this moment.
I have a question.
Go ahead, you're first. You go ahead. I've got some comments to make. I've got comments.
She's got a lot of comments.
I, Dave, I wanted to ask you about the, the funds that we originally were going to give to the county for the navigation center, and you said you hadn't heard anything. Uh, when are we going to hear something?
Mr. Morris has had conversations with the county.
Right, I have talked to, uh, Mr. Ashton, the CIO for the county. His comment was that they do not anticipate needing those funds. He said that they specifically are setting aside some of their ARPA funds, just in case. But at this point, their initial estimates, they do not anticipate needing additional funding, that, uh, the grant funding they've received for homeless should cover those amounts.
Since you, since that topic is up on the table right now, I would like to consider using some of those funds or in it for a future date for, uh, a winter shelter program to get, you know, what, what, to see what there might be some need for a winter shelter through the end of this year until that other shelter comes up.
All right. Um, thank you, Dave, for that staff report. I had requested for this item to come forward because, you know, when we were considering how to spend, um, this windfall of, of money, um, what I really did not want to do was just kind of pick away at it willy-nilly without having, you know, some strategy behind it. And it seems like with the remaining, we've had lots of agenda items coming forward with ARPA asks lately, so I just wanted to kind of like regroup, take a look at what we now have available and make sure that we're just kind of being strategic about how we use these funds. Um, so I really want to have a discussion about what we want to use the five hundred.
What's the deadline for the decision for using this funding?
We have to encumber it by the end of two thousand fourteen and spend it by the-
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four and spend it by the end of twenty-six.
Correct, yeah.
Spend it by what, the end of what?
Twenty-six.
So some, um, some things that I think are important that I would like to suggest, if the council agrees, to kind of put as like guardrails on what the money can be spent on, is town hall safety improvements, um, or layout, you know, town hall improvements other than the equipment for, um, video and audio. The broadband project, homelessness and encampment cleanup and/or encampment cleanup. Um, beautification projects around town that will be noticeable by the whole community and vegetation management are kind of my top priorities. And I wanted to check in with the council and see how you feel about that.
And that's fine, I just want to be sure that we, that money stays in there for the corporation yard. That is just an absolute must.
Well, first, I didn't want to spend that a hundred ninety-six until we actually get that done. Um, we're not moving forward getting everything done the way we thought it was going to get done, so it may end up costing us more. I don't want to take away our fire protection until we are actually there. So that, that was the one-
Which one, Jackie?
Um, number four.
I'm, I'm in agreement with you on that and not only this year, but, you know, going into next year to do some maintenance work and see what that looks like, because we really haven't allocated funds. And so to keep this over to a second year and help us get established on what an annual work project's going to look like.
Just, just a reminder, if I recall right, we did allocate fifty thousand dollars towards that for next year. Is that right, Dave? For vegetation management and out of a general fund?
Correct.
For that, for that maintenance purpose. So there is some funding that we-
Yeah. But I like hanging on to it through, in the next year.
I know everyone's optimistic, we have these contracts, but they haven't moved forward as expected and as promised so far, so I just want to hold back and, and make sure we get our fuel reduction first before we move that money elsewhere.
So if we don't reallocate that, it brings our, our workable capital down to four hundred, about four hundred thousand?
I thought it was closer to three hundred, but-
Five ninety minus one ninety-six?
Maybe five ninety, I had five thirty-three when we added them up.
That's correct, about four hundred thousand.
Okay. But anyways, I mean, I'm hearing new items, town hall safety, beautification projects. These are all things that we hadn't really talked about earlier, so I'm a little uncomfortable. Or let's say, I have a lot of projects, yeah, I'd like to put on the table, you know.
That's what the discussion's about.
I know that some people think our parks and recs are in, in fairly good shape and, and there's some things that really aren't in good shape. You know, I would, I always think to look at those, but honestly, you know, we're just picking away at broadband. Um, so every, every little project we put here, we're saying, we're kind of throwing broadband out the window. So I would, you know, we don't have to allocate all these till twenty twenty-four. I'd like to give us a little more time to see, A, how these fundings actually play out. Are we going to have as much as we think we are? Um, and a little bit more detailed discussion about, you know, how important is it that we move forward with broadband? Because I think we all can put projects out there and broadband can just disappear. And how much are we going to need, you know, for matching fundings? And that may take a little bit of time too, to see, you know, what do we actually need? Are we going to get grants and, and things like that? So it's just kind of my initial thoughts.
With broadband, I agree, and I think that broadband's a really important project that we definitely want to stay committed to. The only thing with that one is that there is a lot of other funding sources available for, you know, infrastructure dollars and things like that available for broadband, so, um-
My only concern is that we might need matching funds for that. So, you know, if we hold back and, you know, we might be able to quadruple our money by having ma- matching funds. I'd just like to see us, you know, we, I, I don't want to allocate this all tonight. I kind of want to give ourselves the opportunity to maximize our dollars moving forward.
So I, I, when I came into this, uh, the only thing that was really critical for me is the fuel reduction. And the rest of it, I was thinking, we just need to take a pause, um, regroup, find out what it is, and then, and then maybe this might be an opportunity for a, a special meeting or a different meeting where we just, you know, kind of reevaluate where all, where we're at on all these and, and bring it back around again. I don't know of any projects right now that are time sensitive, that are pressing, except for maybe one that you're thinking of right now.
Well, you mentioned the winter shelter, but-
Yes, that, that is one.
But then there's the other, you know, we, we have money set aside in projects that we perhaps don't want to tie up with those projects. So that's like another thing that I want to look at, you know, do we want to keep money allocated in the Lions Park shelter? Do we want to keep money allocated in the, um, sewer and water bill assistance program? You know, right now, it's sitting there, we don't really need it there because there is so much other, um, funding available for that. So that's another thing that-
Okay.
What, what can we do tonight?
I think all I would say tonight, if you want to provide, provide direction, then we can bring back formal action for you at your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I wouldn't, just to answer Kara's question about, you're asking about the sixty-three thousand, the fifty thousand. I'm okay with liquidating both of those because I think we do have higher priorities. We have bathrooms that need to be fixed. You know, I, I would like us to, you know, reprioritize some of those things and look at our highest priorities in the city. I mean, shelters are great, but, you know, they're, I, I could tell you at Lions Park, the upper bathroom-
Right.
You know.
Well, the downtown ba-
Downtown bathrooms is another example, yeah.
That's a, yeah.
So, and that's something that, um, you know, in terms of like beautification, I kind of had in mind fixing things like bathrooms in our parks and stuff like that. So do we want to provide direction to staff to put some of that money into the bathroom repairs? Because it is, it's pretty bad. And the downtown one, um, you know, we're going into the Christmas shopping season and it probably needs some work.
Probably won't get done by then.
Well, you know, it's just like I was, as you all know, that was my husband's project. And he did it all with donations. And so it really, um, bless all their hearts and everything, they, I mean, you know, it was great. But it wasn't, I'm going to say professionally planned out and stuff. And I know now that there's a lot of, um, technology and stuff that, that's out there for bathrooms. I mean, they're putting bathrooms down on sidewalks that, you know, fifty thousand dollars for just a, you know. But I, I think that we are going to need money for that. It, it can't be just a, a few hundred dollars. I mean, it's got to really be done correctly.
There's some evaluation that needs to be done there.
Well, and I think we also need to evaluate, all our van, our bathrooms keep getting vandalized. I don't want to put a whole bunch of money into a bathroom that's just going to be torn apart in the next year. What are we going to do to prevent that vandalism from happening again in these prime locations?
Yeah, and that's why I think staff will need some time to, to look at what the best options are. But I do agree, I think the deferred maintenance, um, there's always that list of deferred maintenance that some of those dollars could go to, um, fixing or at least getting our deferred maintenance, um, culled back a little bit. So I'm in favor of that. Another thought I had was with the sewer and water bill assistance program, and this doesn't have to be the full amount, but taking some of those dollars to continue providing our residents with the ability to do some fuel reduction at their locations, so, um, so that we would have that fund still there. I know we, we allocated some fund to the fire council, but, um, you know, just like people couldn't pay for their water bills, people are still having a hard time paying for those fuel reductions because we know it's a lot. So to the extent that we can get private lots still cleaned up, uh, is maybe, you know, dedicating some funds.
That's a, that's a good thought, Michael, if you think about that.
I do really like that, um, that idea. And we've talked about the ability to provide funds to private properties to do improvements. And there's been, you know, it's like, is it a gift of public funds? But then I also know that ARPA is a little bit more flexible with things like that in terms of assistance. So do you know if we could legally do that? Because I think, I think it's needed.
I think, I think we can also, anytime you can articulate a public benefit, even if it's going to a private entity or person, it would not be considered as a gift of public fund, so that would be possible.
Well, would that be something that perhaps you'd want to consider giving additional funds to the, uh, Fire Safe Council? To continue their program?
It would just allocate it to them.
It'd be the same as what we've done already and just allocate additional funds.
That's what I thought, because it would be less staff work for us to have to deal with, you know, to, to have a step up program, uh, but that we would just go through the Fire Safe Council to allocate more funds. Because it sounds like, I mean, thank you for the update today, and it sounds like it's needed and if you had the dollars, you could probably do more.
And even like Sue showed in the program, we can't fund the entire, you know, but it, it, every little bit helps and it, it encourages people to step forward and say, okay, they did this, so I'll, you know, match it and do.
I want, I would like to have some guardrails on that because I could see people who are more affluent-
Absolutely.
And in the know, take advantage of a program like that when they could easily do it themselves. So I, I want to see it actually helping people that need help.
Agreed, yeah.
I agree.
Um, and then what about the homelessness navigation center money? Obviously, the county apparently does not need this. This was for something very specific, um, that is no longer on the table. I do still think that there's a big need for things like encampment cleanup.
Definitely.
So I don't want to, I don't want to completely just take those funds out of, um, use for that type of activity and just put it in some-
Look what it's cost us already just to clear out camps, you know, and, um, I mean, it's very expensive. So I, I think that's a great idea.
How do you, how do you want to park it?
Well, I think we should provide direction to staff to say, you know, set aside X nine dollars for community cleanup or, yeah, homeless.
I don't, I mean, maybe you should ask staff to kind of look at some of those costs and come back with recommendations for the, the residual ARPA funds. You know, we've all mentioned some things and have, you know, our department heads, like they did in the first time, you know, give us the high priorities and, and kind of, um, now that they've heard everything, we have to say, kind of.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was thinking too, is, you know, we've kind of provided some thoughts and direction, but the numbers, I would be hesitant to put a, a dollar amount on the, on, on any of these yet, just to-
Yeah, I want to look at a whole list. You know, I want to prioritize and we've just thrown out a lot of things and a lot of thoughts. And, um, I, I think our, our staff should be weighing in on all that also.
Dave or Chief Wren, do you have any just ballpark ideas on how much it's going to cost to clean up the Broadway camp? Terry? Okay. Or Public Works and Facilities?
I, I don't, I don't think we have any estimated cost, it's not going to be cheap.
Well, I'm remembering that one was sixty thousand dollars down here and another one was forty thousand. I mean, so it's, you know, we're looking-
And it depends, you know, we've gotten, we've been successful in having volunteer work over the last couple of years.
We've done a better job going forward with that and I think we can do it for less, but there is going to be some cost involved with it, yeah.
Okay.
You know, another thing-
It's almost like we parked this for, except for maybe a few exceptions, because there's no needs until first part of, even the first part of next year. And reevaluate, because then those things will start, uh, revealing themselves as some of those needs there. Uh, we'll have some time to think about it. Um, I don't see, I mean, the winter's coming, so I don't see a lot of, any of these things really critical. And it gives the staff, because I don't want to, you know.
Can I, can I mention one thing about broadband?
Yes.
My, my pet, my pet project, let me say that. Um, there is a grant, and Michael, you're familiar with it, Green Means Go, uh, that we plan on submitting a, an application for. Uh, it does not require a match, but it has language in there that suggests a match would increase your likelihood of being funded.
The SECOG?
Uh, yeah, through SECOG, yeah. Um, we're working on that right now. Um, it, it's an interesting one because it needs, it has to be, uh, and I plan on bringing this back to you on, it's due on the twenty-seventh of this month. I plan on bringing it back to you on the twenty-fifth, so I, I just thought I'd complicate matters more for you.
Oh, good.
But, I mean, if we decide we're not, we're not ready to make that commitment of, of ARPA funds, I understand that. But I, I do want to present that to you. I'll present the application and get approval for you to, give me approval to move forward with it. And then whether or not it has, uh, matching funds in it, we, we can move forward. Still working on the dollar amount for that. I'm, and, and the project that we're looking at, just so you know, this has to be associated, well, it has to be within our, our green zone that we've established, which is the Broadway corridor. It also has to be related to, uh, creating additional housing. So we're working on that, that connection and we think we can do it because we've already, we're in the middle of a study through the Civic Lab Pro, Lab Project to look at how we can create mixed-use housing on that, in that zone, on Broadway. So I think there is definitely that connection. Adding high-speed internet can improve our business and our residential, uh, as a need up there. So that's the connection. So the project I'm looking at is kind of what we've, we've started for our pilot project, where we'd take, uh, the internet from our central location on Main Street that we've established all the way up to Broadway and then all the way up Broadway and, and make that available. Put the full service in, making it available to all businesses and residential on, on Broadway. So that's the potential project that we're, we're working on in terms of submitting. So I'll just fill it out for you to think about. I, I will bring the application back, whether or not you decide to add, uh, any funds to that, to, for matching funds. Uh, that's up to you and, and I'm finding a way, because I understand this is, we don't have all the answers for, for this. And, and there will be other opportunities, there's other grants, uh, that we are working on. Uh, we're, we're very hopeful that the, the LADA grant, uh, which is a, um, planning grant that we've applied for, for four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. We've had good conversations back and forth with the state on that and I'm-
And what's that grant?
That's, it's, LADA is Local Agency Technical Assistance Grant.
And?
And it'll be towards broadband also.
Oh, that, okay.
But it's, but it's only planning, it can't go towards construction.
Oh, oh, oh.
The Green Means Go grant would go towards construction of the system.
You know, we talk about so, so much that I can't remember from one, one grant to another, so.
I, I'll echo Cleve's, uh, you know, thoughts here and I, I do think we have a really good opportunity with the SECOG grant. Uh, I think we're in a, we would be in a good position, I think, especially with being participants in Civic Lab and it being, you know, one of, one of the examples that was put out there already. So, you know, if we do want to do that, there's obviously no guarantees of us getting the, the grant, but I do think we'd be in a good position and if we did allocate some additional funding, um, as match, you know, it would, it would increase our, our scores, you know, that much more, so, something to think about.
Well, I think we should put something towards it. I mean, that's, we, we said it, this was on our original list. I don't think we should ax it out for a bunch of other things unless we have really high priority things, so. And, you know, like you said, sometimes maybe it's not as much as we want to put, but putting something towards matching can really help in application.
So, um, do you have any idea, Cleve? So, um, do you have any idea, Cleve, are you looking at like a hundred grand or?
I, my estimate was somewhere between two and five actually, but I would settle for two. I anticipate this is going to be close to a two million dollar project. So if, if we had a ten percent match of two hundred thousand dollars, I think that's, that's something.
Okay, and when would we find out if we were awarded the grant?
Um, I don't remember if they've said when those would be awarded. Michael, do you remember?
Twenty-three.
I was gonna say, it's not till after the first of the year, yeah.
So if we did not receive the grant, we would have time to utilize the money.
Oh, definitely, yeah. You, you could pull that back and put it for something else, yes, yeah.
Okay, so, oh, sorry. Do you have something you want to add?
If I may, Mayor, um, kind of going back to the discussion about city council discretion of the money. Um, when the final guidelines came out for the American Rescue Plan, there was an option for a ten million dollar exemption that basically allows every dollar under ten million dollars to be considered revenue loss. And we took that option. What that means is, is that the money is now very discretionary. So you can decide pretty much.
Yeah.
It'd be like, kind of like your general fund. I mean, it is federal funds, but you have more discretion in what you can use those funds for.
Okay, I didn't realize that the entire amount was, I thought that.
That was kind of a late breaking thing. It was.
It was, it was a later change that they made to the guidelines that allowed us to do that. That's made it much more flexible, yeah.
Um, well, that's good. I still think it should be used on things that, you know, are really visible to the community and make, make things better, um, in everyday life. So in terms of direction to staff, I would propose liquidating item five, the Lions Park Shelter, and item thirteen, the sewer and water bill assistance, and item eighteen, um, the navigation center. Was there anything else? I think that's everything that we talked about. Leaving the one ninety-six in vegetation management, um, and coming back at the next meeting with some suggestions or estimates in terms of the broadband, which you plan on bringing back anyways.
This is the difficult thing. We'll, we'll be able to bring that back. Um, I'll, I'll have, you know, the application and, and give you that option to consider something there. These other items in terms of getting quotes on some of it, like the bathrooms, those may take a little bit more time than bringing it back at the next meeting. So, but we will work on it, work towards that.
Okay, and, um.
So we don't want to.
Dennis would like to consider money for the navigation.
Yeah, I, I think with, with what we're doing here, however the winter shelter comes up and whatever the needs are, we can re, we can consider it and, and look at the source of the money at the time. I don't know that it has to be ARPA and at the time that we, if, if, if and when it comes forward, we could evaluate the source at that time, I imagine.
That seems like it would be a time sensitive.
It would be, but, but I, I know that there's an ask out there and, but I, but I don't, and I have some numbers, but I'm not ready to just throw it out there.
There's a what out there?
An ask.
So I, I've been contacted by Housing Eldorado a couple of times, but they, they referred it not to as a, as a winter shelter. They've asked me about, um, a shelter to be used during inclement weather, which is a completely different thing to me. That's only if we have, you know, that sub, sub freezing weather and, and snowstorms and stuff like that. So, um, so anyway, I have had some contact with them regarding that, so.
We can just leave that hanging. It doesn't need to, I mean, we could, we could, we could look at all different types of funding for it, so. Not that many, but a few.
And do we want to, do we want to, um, for the remaining approximately four hundred thousand dollars, do we want to stipulate for deferred maintenance, kind of community improvement projects, homeless encampments, broadband, vegetation maintenance? Or my, my concern and the reason why I brought this forward is because I feel like if you don't, um, then anytime the city needs a piece of equipment, you know, or no offense, but that's just gonna be where, you know, I mean, that's, that's why I brought it forward is to make sure that it's being used for what we want it to be used for.
Can I suggest that we, we bring those back to you at the next meeting as part of that agenda item? And you can, you can, you know, approve those.
Bring, bring what back?
Those four categories that you just named.
To, to pull them.
To the future, future, future money would be allocated to that.
Time having that discussion, I don't know. I think I'd rather just lock the money, well, lock the money, just set it aside for now and, and know that other than the broadband, that money's gonna be set aside for a future conversation.
And just say, nobody can touch this. This is ours.
I mean, I, and I like those, but, but I, but I'd rather set it aside for a future conversation rather than.
But then look at it as all together instead of just chipping it.
Exactly.
Because that's my concern.
Right, right. And, and then, because I don't want to put guardrails on it today and then have to redo that again. I think it's a deeper conversation than just this right now.
Okay, so are we saying, okay, we have four hundred thousand we just liquidated, if, you know, to move forward? Are we saying we want to put two hundred thousand dollars to the broadband project matching? And then the two hundred thousand we want to hold? Or are we holding all four hundred thousand because we're gonna have to?
We'll consider that at the next meeting.
I thought it was.
We're not allocating anything now.
Wasn't it six hundred?
Broadband, I guess.
It could potentially be six hundred thousand if we end up liquidating the, uh, fuel reduction, if we don't use that. But we had said we wanted to hold on to that for right now until we're sure that that happens.
Yep, thanks for that reminder, yeah.
Okay, so we'll liquidate those items. We'll consider the broadband amount at the next meeting. And then the rest will be held.
Held.
Until a list of projects comes back for it that can be looked at together instead of just.
If, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
Could we, uh, just receive direction from the council and then bring those items forward? I'm just concerned about, um, actions being taken without it being agendized. And because these are federal funds, single audit.
Right.
So we're not making a motion.
We're not making a motion, we're just giving directions. Yeah, I was just very specific, I guess.
Specific direction.
I'd like to move that now.
Okay.
Um, okay, we'll open this item up to the public if anyone would like to comment on it.
Placerville resident. So I think, uh, certainly having money available for broadband. I know that sort of bucket is currently empty, um, is super important. So when we have some of these funds liquidated, I would agree with that. And then having that available for things like matching funds on the project, it sounds like will come before the council. I think, you know, getting that in, um, I know I've been a big advocate of mixed-use development, particularly in that Broadway corridor. So anything we can do to help drive that, which I think broadband internet would help with, would be great. Um, I agree with keeping our fuel reduction. I think vegetation management is super important, um, until we're absolutely confident we don't need it. And also with looking at providing some more funding to the Fire Safe Council to allow private owners who cannot, um, you know, pay for or do the physical labor themselves to have a means to kind of help with that. Um, you know, I know a lot of folks, they're, they're, I mean, I have neighbors who, you know, aren't necessarily the greatest on vegetation management and they're retired folks. And I don't want to like be on their case, but it also makes me surplus with my property. There's only so much I can do alone, um, and I can volunteer to help them. But that's about kind of as far as it goes. So, uh, I think that having sort of programs for that, but we would want to make sure that like, you know, clearly I can afford to maintain my own property. So I would want to make sure that like the folks that are getting that service are ones who really just can't do it, um, on their own. So that's my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole.
Sue Rodman, Fire Safe Council, so you know I'm gonna vote that we keep some money in there for vegetation management, more than just the fifty thousand dollars per year. Um, it's expensive work to do. And as far as the Fire Safe Council doing for people, the, the last set of slides I showed you was a person who is not able to do theirs. And so their grant actually is fifteen hundred dollars. It was the largest one we put out this year. And it's an, a, uh, an older disabled person and their older disabled brother who lives with them too. And they could not do this work on their own. So that was the reason that we went ahead and, and did their, did a larger grant for them. And this will not complete their work, but it does a pretty good job of getting them started. And, um, I think that, you know, there are quite a few people out there still who would like to get an evaluation. And some of those are elderly and low income and need some help. And people, a lot of those are people with very large trees. And if you've taken a chainsaw in your hands and then looked at some tree that's sixty, seventy feet tall and thought about it, you're not gonna do that yourself. It's got to be, you've got to have help with those. But we need or I can handle, but I'm not gonna tackle an eighty-foot tree. I had helped to do the two big trees that I did this year. So, uh, and also I'd like to support Councilmember Thomas's idea of doing a winter shelter. We heard that the, the, the community is not prepared to do a winter shell this year. They, I think, were counting on the county to come through and have something in place. And the, the part that we did last year with the, up on, on Main Street there, the old DA's office, I think, was very well done. It worked and people supported it. And I didn't hear anybody say that it was terrible or they had any bad experiences there. So I'd like to encourage us to go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. All right, I see no one else stepping up to the podium, so we will bring it back and move on to. So, so everyone's set with direction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just one, one thing for consideration, she brought up the issue of the winter shelter. And, uh, you know, I, I gotta be careful with this. And I don't want to necessarily over commit either. Because the idea of the navigation center is that it is not a winter shelter. Is that it is a navigation center and trends for transitional and people working on getting out of homelessness. So the idea, I, I, I might have misspoke a little bit in the idea that says, well, this will get us until the shelter, the, the navigation center opens. But I don't know that that's a, a fair statement either, so I just needed to correct that a little bit.
Okay, so item thirteen, council reports from other agency meetings. And we'll start with Eldorado Transit Authority.
All right, we approved a revised salary schedule. We're kicking off the My Ride Program, uh, which is a mileage reimbursement program for seniors, veterans, and disabled residents where you have to sign up through Eldorado Transit. But then those people can have neighbors or friends, you know, give them a ride and then be reimbursed just to try to expand the transit program. So you can look that up on the website. Um, the local passes, uh, for the fall are on sale at Eldorado Transit. And Eldorado Transit is hiring.
And there also, there's going to be the pilot for the zero emission bus going from Sacramento up to Tahoe.
Yeah, you can sign up to ride that.
So that will.
Say that again?
There's gonna be a pilot ride of a zero emission bus, electric bus, that's going to make the trip to Tahoe. And I didn't.
Do you have to wait like six hours until you can make the trip back?
I was, I was surprised to hear that. I didn't realize that the, they had figured out the topographic challenges of getting up there. Um, so that's, that's interesting.
Everybody has to get out and push.
Do you remember what date that's gonna, I can't remember which weekend.
I can't remember, but, but if you contact Eldorado Transit, I'm sure they'll hook you up.
But you could, you can go see it and, you know. I, I hope it does well, but I, I was, I didn't realize that we were quite that close to being able to go all the way up to Tahoe.
Well, isn't that why we bought all those electric buses?
Well, that's why we spent so much money on the strategic plan to convert our buses to electric buses.
Exactly.
Um, Eldorado County Transportation Commission?
I was not at my best that day, so I'm not gonna comment.
Well, I brought this if you want a, a reminder of what we talked about.
The, um, project monitoring report was kind of the bulk.
Do you, do you want to look at that? I've got a check mark with it. He explained, um, what we talked about that concerns Placerville, I don't think.
We got an update on the Greater Placerville Wildfire Evacuation Preparedness Community Safety Resiliency Plan. If there's ever a need for an acronym, it's for that plan right there.
We, we talked about that and they, they did a great update, but it's still, you know, they talked also, we're gonna circle back around on the, the fact that it's still data and we're waiting to see what that comes of that.
Right.
And, uh, so then you talked, you, you mentioned one thing just a second ago. The, oh, the, the project plan, the project.
Yeah, the monitoring report.
Yeah, monitoring report. And I, I'll, I'll encourage anybody who's interested in what's going on in the city to, or in the county. Uh, it's, it's a full plan of every project that is on, that is planned for, for future, for future or is in current development right now. And they're all in here. And they tell you where they're at, how much they're funded, how much this funding's needed. And, uh, and they tell you whether they're on time or not. And those guys do a great job of laying out all the significant projects that are being funded through state, local, CMAC funding, all sorts of different sources. So it's a great place to, to find out about what you're. And that was, that was the bulk of the meeting.
Yeah, and that's available at their website for members of the public to go check out. I, I refer to that document a lot throughout the year on just, I mean, I'm curious about, you know, what, what's this construction happening here? What project is this? Or, you know, if, if something's on track or how it's being funded. It's, it's a good document.
There was a bunch of.
So the, the things that involve Placerville was the, uh, Main Street Cedar Ravine Clay Street intersection, um, the Canal Street Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project Phase Two, uh, the Kembelik Road Sidewalk Project. And that was all I have marked for, oh, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Oh, and then they, they brought us up to date on the Camino Safety Project. I know a lot of folks, even though it's Camino, there's so many questions on, when is that thing gonna be completed? I think it's nearing completion, I'm hoping, that nothing else goes wrong. Um, and then the other one was the, um, the Cornobirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. And boy, that's got an acronym.
CHRISA, yeah.
Surface Transportation Block Grant Program Projects. So, yeah, and like Dennis said, go online and pull this up. It's great, um, this.
There, there was an update on the Greater Placerville Wildfire Evacuation Preparedness Community Safety and Resiliency Plan. They, they love these titles. And it, it's, and it's something that's, uh, that a, a large part of our community is involved with, at least the, uh, uh, public safety, every aspect of, uh, different people that touch wildfire evacuation preparedness. And so, uh, that is a, that is a still ongoing project. And, uh, the next coordination meeting is scheduled for October twenty-six to start coordinating, coordinating public outreach. So it is, that is still in motion and we look forward to, you know, future conversations on how that goes.
And you know, we joke about this acronym thing. So part of this monitoring program, they provide, and this is the acronym.
That's just tip of the iceberg.
And there's no way I can memorize that.
Three pages there. Okay, that's it, that's it for transit.
Okay, LAFCO, we finally hired an EO. Shiva Frenzen is the new EO for LAFCO. So we did that. We held a public hearing and adopted small to medium wa, water and wastewater district MSRs and sphere of influence updates. We formed an ad hoc committee for the City of Placerville, City of South Lake Tahoe, and Cameron Park CSD for the MSR and SOI study. That's Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence, all those acronyms. Um, Commissioner White wanted to let everyone know there is a charter review committee for the county. They met the first time yesterday, but he wanted to make sure everybody, um, knew that there are four things being considered, um, to increase the amount of board of supervisor members, to eliminate term limits, um, to consider different elections cycles for seven elected, uh, department heads and to combine elected offices. So if you go to the Eldorado County Legisstar where you see the Board of Supervisor agendas, you can look up, um, the Charter Review Committee and find out when their next meeting is and, um, contact those people to give comments and thoughts about those items.
Interesting. All right. Thank you, Jackie. Uh, SECOG?
Uh, we'll meet next week.
Pioneer?
Um, attended Audit Review Committee. And basically that's going through auditing, which is the most boring. the most boring part of, of any financial part, but, I don't know, maybe you love, sorry, Dave. I know, I know every, you know, every organization would deal with that goes through an audit is like, ugh, we gotta do the audit again. I think that was the same thing at FIRE, wasn't it?
Fire Safety Council, Patty?
Well, I think Sue's program tonight pretty much brought us up to date on what's going on.
All right. Two by two has not met and Opportunity Knox. I attended that on Friday and not much to report, they, they did recap of a lot of things, summaries. Request for future agenda items. Staff reports, item 15, we have our monthly police stats. Chief Friend, would you like to highlight anything for the public?
I would, thank you. While they're fresh in my mind, there were two incidents last week that I would like to highlight. Last Monday, a very tragic incident occurred just outside our city limits in the county. Our officers were requested to respond and in arriving on the scene, they located the suspect hiding in the vegetation, at which time they took him into custody and turned him over to the investigating agency. That was a homicide incident right outside the city limit, so kudos to our team for their head on a swivel and, and using sound tactics and actually looking before they, they leaped and took a very violent, dangerous person into custody. Last Thursday, our crime reduction team worked with the United States Marshals Violent Fugitive Task Force to locate, apprehend, and remove a violent, wanted fugitive from our city. So that was good work on their, on their behalf. It was an all-day incident and I made sure to tell Sergeant Cadau to pass on to the, to the fugitive that they're not welcome here and please don't come back. Other than that, I can review anything on the staff report that you have questions on. You will notice I included our kind of running tally. That for us internally is how we measure our monthly. The, the stats that we provide you previously are year-over-year comparison of that month, so that would be helpful, other than we need to attach a ledge, a key to it to help with some of the acronyms that we know, but may not be known to, to others. So, a lot of good work being done at the police department. We got a comment today that they're seeing more transient subjects, they appear to be transient, walking around town. That's not unexpected because of the disruption we've done to the encampments on private properties. So they're looking for a place to land and our staff is contacting them throughout the day to ensure that they're doing okay and if there's any services we can provide to them. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but today in the newspaper, you were, the police department was featured with your new program?
Yeah, the crime reduction team.
I was just wondering if you, that, what you were just saying, but it's too new, right, to really...
They've been, they've been going kind of strong probably for the last six weeks.
Okay.
Took them a minute to form and for us to kind of figure out, I mean, we had conceptually an idea of how we would deploy them, but we wanted to make sure that we're meeting the, the goals and the expectations of the community, addressing those quality of life issues. They're also running two pretty significant investigations right now that I, I don't want to discuss, but...
Because of this program?
Because of this team. If we didn't have this team, we couldn't run these two investigations.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Well, since I don't understand all that goes on in law enforcement, I don't really understand that, why, you know, it took this, but I just congratulate you on starting this program and, and hoping that it's really going to be a success.
You know, it's, the thanks really goes to the council for funding the position, funding the supervisor position. We combined a couple other positions to create this team, but without that infilled supervision, it would have been, I mean, I have a lot of faith and confidence in, in my staff, but we need that direct supervisor out there to ensure that, you know, the team understands what they're doing, why they're doing it, and, and get the results that we're looking for. So, thank you, guys.
One question, on the crime reduction team table, is sight, arrest, tense, and contacts, is tense like tense or is it an abbreviation for something else?
It's tense.
So it's like how many tenses you've spotted or...
We've marked for, we've marked for immediate abatement.
Okay. And I just want to say that I've noticed the data on this has gotten much more in-depth and thorough with this report. Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're trying, that's the only, it, you know, it's, it's odd that it's taken us this long to get up to where we, we need to be. Really, it's the systems that we use are, are not the greatest, but we're fixing that as well, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Chief Friend? All right, and then 15.2, this is the fire chief's report. Would you like to highlight anything, Chief, for there?
Thank you, ma'am, just a couple things. I'll try to up the data on ours, we're using about a 54-year-old system right now, so I'll see if I can get another one for you.
Well, you have really nice pictures, so I appreciate those.
And, you know, I would like to comment on that, the, the bottom two pictures, last month, in September, we attended the IFF, International Association of Firefighters, Fall Memorial Service in Colorado Springs where one of our firefighters, Brandon, whose street was placed on the wall, Brandon passed away in 2019 from occupational cancer. He was only with us for a few months before he got diagnosed and went through his treatment, but his whole time with County Fire was spent at Station 25, so that was finally due to COVID, we were able to, to see him put on the wall, which was a really good ceremony. And then secondly, just to bring the council up to date, there was an incident unfortunate that took place Sunday evening over at the Placerville Fire Center, which is where the CAL FIRE hand crews are at. They had a fire with one of their crew buses. In the process of extinguishing the fire, they did have two of their members that were pretty significantly burned. They're both in a burn unit right now, and so I would just ask the, the council and the community to, to keep those firefighters and their families in, in mind as they have a bit of a recovery ahead of them. But with that, I'm not happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, well, thank you for that update. I was sad to hear about that incident on Sunday. Do we know what the cause of the fire was?
I got this from my buddy Joe, it's under investigation.
Okay. Well, we are, we are thinking of the firefighters that were wounded in that incident.
I do, I do have a question. With, with regards to the, the stand down on one of the units, the, over, what, 49? Medic unit? Is that, how's, how's that going? Is there any hope to have it manned up again or is that just kind of a static situation right now with having that one more unit offline? I, I don't know, what is the status of that, I guess?
The status of that is hopefully at the JPA Board meeting later this month, we'll entertain some interest from some other agencies to stand that unit up. County Fire in particular, we're trying to work with Diamond Springs, see if we could assist them. If not, it's, standing up a medic unit is, is not an easy task and so we, we do have four units right now, so for us to stand up a fifth, we could take that on if we need to, but the system needs it. The crews are really, they're getting stretched pretty thin and, you know, I frequently get across my phone that, you know, the system's at level zero, which means there's no ambulances available in the county. So it's, it's something that we have to get mitigated quickly.
How, how does that reach, I mean, it, you don't want to hear, you know, it's, it's a drawdown to zero, really ever, I mean, that's, that's bad news. What, what, is there any, like, what's the right word? Is there any, any oper, worst case scenario, how do we, how do we institute an emergency plan where we, you know, I don't know, do you? Well, there's, there's already mutual aid, because they'll pull Folsom in when that happens, but, but is there any circumstance that we would have to go out and, you know, draw people in from Sacramento, hire them up, or, or, you know, what do we do? I mean, let's say we don't have, there's no staffing, I mean, because I know staffing short, is short everywhere. I mean, we're getting to the point where we're running, we're drawing down our, our medic units.
So we do have mutual aid plans with, in place with Sacramento County and with our partners up on the East Slope and Service Area 3, and we can utilize units from there. They, they call our units down there unfortunately because they're in the same, same issue. The, the crux of the problem is, is the lack of firefighter paramedics that are available nationwide. Side note, when I was in Colorado Springs, I spoke with a gentleman from Canada and their system is incredibly worse off than ours. But we are looking at some alternative staffing models to, to bring those units back online and it is challenging when you hear when we're down at level one or even two, if there's two ambulances covering the county, that ambulance could be, you know, Placerville going to Volcanoville and that's a long haul.
So we, you have utilized, you are, are you utilizing somebody to do the transfers now? So that's kind of taking that off of the plate a little bit?
Yes, fortunately, just prior to the downstaffing of Medic 49, we got out of the, the majority of the interfacility transfers, which was about 150 calls a month.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I would open the staff reports up to the public if anyone would like to comment on either 15.1 or 15.2.
I just had a quick question on the police report. I saw that there's higher misdemeanor arrests this year than previous years pretty significantly, and I'm wondering if that's resulted to the new crime response task unit or if we just have more folks in our community committing them now? So, any insight on that?
Thank you, Nicole. All right, I will close public comment. Chief Friend, would you like to address that? I know that our police officers have been proactive lately, but I'm not sure if that's, if we're also just seeing more crime.
No, it's, it's mostly DUIs, so we saw 39% increase in DUI arrests. And you're, you know, you're hard pressed to find a felony anymore after they changed the law, so there's just more, what used to be a felony is a misdemeanor at this time, so. That's, I think that's it, drug arrests, I know we're seeing a uptick in those, but...
Okay. So what you're saying in terms of the felony and misdemeanor is that because of how they reclassified felonies as misdemeanors, there's just more crimes in the category of misdemeanors as being counted for that statistic?
Right, Prop 47 changed all on narcotic offenses from felonies to misdemeanors, so, I mean, that could be, but looking at the stats now, in comparison to last year, we saw 39, we see a 39% increase over this time last year of our misdemeanor arrests and DUIs, so.
Okay.
And then some marginal increases in other areas.
Have you seen fentanyl in our community?
There's a lot of it, yes.
Right now? Okay, yeah.
Along those lines, I did talk to Cleve about it and I don't know if he talked to you about it, but it seems to me that, especially Sacramento, but I'm hearing on the news that the, the cities and the, everybody's getting really concerned about this fentanyl situation and I'm wondering, do you keep in contact with, I, I know you do, the contact with the school system or is this something that maybe we need to maybe highlight a little bit? I don't know, what do we do?
It's, so specifically the fentanyl pills, it's, it's easier for, and it's coming out of the cartels, out of, out of southern, southern border. It's easier for them to smuggle in the, the powder, several pounds of it, and then sit with a pill press and make 500,000 fentanyl pills over a weekend and then distribute them throughout the United States. So it's an easier product to distribute, to manuf, to bring into the country, to manufacture and then distribute than any other of the controlled substances that we had previously dealt with.
Well, I understand that, but I'm wondering if, it, to me, it just seems like we're almost heading for a crisis.
We're already, we're already there.
We're in the crisis. So do we need to do some kind of a community outreach, I mean, or, I don't, yeah, education? I don't know, is that something we can assist the schools with? That's what I'm asking.
I, I know that, I know that EDCO is, is in conversation about that very subject. The, the meat of that conversation, I'm not aware of, I know, I know that they are having it. You know, as, as far as community awareness, we, I mean, we could do something, we can push something out, but it's already, it's, it's already, it's been here and we're, if we say, hey, there's a fentanyl crisis, they're going to be like, yeah, that was a year ago.
Okay, so, but my, what I'm, I think, I know what I'm asking is, we, I, I keep hearing parents that have lost a child because a child tried at one time, because they ordered the wrong, you know, they ordered a pill and it came, so they're advocating for more caution in the schools and, I mean, or this information, working on the kids and I, you know, I, I just, like I say...
Right, I don't, I don't have any going to that. I don't want to drive in the lane of the school district, I think that they're probably the most appropriate organization to disseminate that information amongst their schools, they have that, that avenue and pipeline and, and we would absolutely help them with that, but...
I was just going to say, what we can do is inquire at the schools, we have good contacts there, and find out what their plans are and what they're doing and, and report back to you what, what things are going on.
The sheriff actually has a program that goes into schools and reaches into schools and does education on drugs.
We do the same.
Well, it, it's, is it a joint thing or is it...
No, it's done through the SROs.
SROs.
The, the presentations are done through the school resource officers.
Okay, and, but does he not go into the ones that are in the city limits, the schools?
We have our own SRO.
And that same, is that part of that program or the funding and such?
Those, for the school resource officers.
All the literature and all those types of things that go along with that?
Yeah, I would, I would imagine, yeah. I don't know what's, I don't...
I know I donate to, to a program for, that funds those programs in our schools in this community and so...
It's more than likely through EDCO and that the information is given to the SROs from EDCO to deliver that presentation. Because schools are very regimented about what is presented to their student bodies.
Right.
I just know that there's program, that there is a program out there that is, that is funded.
So what about the areas beyond the schools? The people that are out there that are not going to school, the young people that are floundering? Is there some sort of an outreach to them?
Other than, other than normal social interactions they have with their, their peer groups or, or stuff like that, I mean, it's, fentanyl, I would, I would be completely shocked if I ran into somebody and I, I mentioned fentanyl to them and they had no clue what I was talking about.
Okay. Okay. Well, what, what's his name that spoke, the preacher?
Oh, Jonathan.
Jonathan.
Right.
And talked about that one incident at the Motherlode Motel, you know, and it's like, so do these people at the Motherlode Motel, do they...
Yeah, we, we hear about these, oh, there was an overdose, but we self-administered Narcan. They never report that to us officially and I don't know if they do it to the medic units or the hospital. So we don't know if their data is actually factual. We know we've had opiate overdose deaths in the city because we've responded to the death report and there's only been, I believe, one up at the hotel, one, maybe two, so it, it's, it's a very dangerous drug and it's a drug that you don't want to experiment with. You don't want to use any drugs at all, but don't, don't say, yeah, I'm just gonna, you know, like, it's not a, it's not marijuana, it's not, it, it is something that will shut your system down and so...
All right, thank you. Thank you. Item 16, upcoming agenda items, there's, there's a list that folks can read in their own time, just a couple, extra mile day proclamation, Hangtown Creek covert, construction contracts, there's, there's several, so I will, I'll leave it at that and it is 8:13. I will adjourn this meeting until October 25th. All right, good night, everyone.